Your patience. Welcome to the Monday, February 26th, meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Let's start the evening with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I would just like to announce that the Board met in an executive session right before this meeting, and we discussed matters of personnel. All right. Consent agenda. At this time, I am looking for a motion to -- or does anyone have anything they'd like to pull off the consent agenda? Commissioners? Staff? Anyone in the public? Okay. Oh.
Good evening. My name is Richard Anthony, 408 Inverary, Villanova. I am also a member of the Board of Directors of Radnor Studio 21, and I'm here tonight to introduce the new General Manager of Radnor Studio 21.
Can we stop you right there?
Yeah, and so we get to public comment, and then you could do that in public comment? I thought you had something to pull off the consent agenda.
The hearing aid isn't working the way it should.
That's all right. Please, we'll be to public participation in a few minutes. Thank you so much. Okay, so, seeing there's nothing to be pulled, Commissioner Clark?
So, I'll move for the passage of the consent agenda items 1A through F. Is there a second?
A second.
A second.
All right. All those in favor of the motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda items A through F, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. And I'd just like to note that Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Nagel are excused from this meeting this evening. Okay. Appointments to Boards and Commissions. Commissioner Clark?
Sure, I'll take this. So, we met, we interviewed a gentleman by the name of James Gibbons, who applied for the Shade Tree Commission. After speaking with him, reviewing his resume, and discussing it, we believe that he is fully qualified and would be a good addition to the Shade Tree Commission. So, with that being said, I will move for the appointment of James Gibbons to the Shade Tree Commission. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
All right. See if there's any discussion or anything?
Yeah, is there any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of the appointment of Mr. James Gibbons to the Shade Tree Commission, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Okay. Township recognition. Mr. Zankowski and Commissioner Clark.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to ask our Assistant Township Manager and Finance Director and our Assistant Finance Director, Mr. Bob Tate, please come forward. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Luke. We're fortunate again, due to the efforts of the hard work and dedication of our Board of Commissioners, and also to our hard work and dedication of our Finance Department. For the, this would be our seventh year in a row that the Township is going to receive the Government of Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Radnor Township. This award is for the United States and Canada. It's one of, it's highly sought after. There are not many of these that are given out, and we are fortunate again to have received this. Again, I know if you have the opportunity to look at our budget, I know it's one that there's a lot of information that is put out there. I know there's some that have been critical to say, "There's so much information out there that you're trying to hide something from us." But actually, everything is out there. We've actually put the checkbook out there as well, so every single check that's written, you can actually go onto the website and see where every check that's written is there. So, everything is put out there through the initiation of the audits. There are different looks at the audits, so that the auditors meet not only with the Board of Commissioners. We had our Citizens Group that would meet with the auditors as well. So, if there was any looks from any, or any concerns about the integrity of how the finances are handled, the auditors are able to meet independently away from staff, so that questions could be asked, and then the auditors could look into those different items. So, the award of Financial Reporting Achievement has been awarded to the individuals or the departments designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing and awarding the winning CAFER. The CAFER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFER. So, the first one is to the Award of Financial Reporting Achievement to the Radnor Township Finance Department for your outstanding performance. So, Bill, I'd like to present this to you and to Bob Tate. Congratulations. And then also, the Certificate of Achievement in Excellent in Financial Reporting is presented to the Township of Radnor, Pennsylvania, for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2016, and this is presented to Luke Clark and the entire Board of Commissioners. Congratulations and thank you to the Board.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate you handing that to us, Bob, but this is all the work of these gentlemen right here. They do a great job. The budget is nearly, was it 300 pages this year, I think? So, you know, I get the packet delivered to me, and it takes me a while to go through it, but that is, we believe in more information rather than less, that's for sure. It is all open. It's out there for everybody to see. This award is well deserved, and as you'll see when we do our finance update a little bit later, there is meticulous detail and there is full disclosure. So, Bill and Bob, you guys just do a great job. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Well, everyone's gonna get real sick of hearing from me in about a half hour, so I'll keep this short. I do appreciate the recognition tonight. I would be remiss, the folks who are really behind the award are those in the Finance Department. They're the ones answering the phones and responding to emails as they come in, and they're the ones processing all of the accounting and keeping the books in good order. They work very closely with all of the other Township Departments. It's something that everybody takes very seriously. So, we're standing up here, but the award really goes to those folks who are, who are not here tonight, so we accept this on their behalf. I would also like to thank those members of Carfact that were critical over the last seven years. One of the things that we're very proud of is the fact that in 2008 and '09, there were audit, there were audit comments, roughly 40 or so. We've whittled that down to now there's one, and we're utilizing software, implementing software right now that'll take care of that one last comment. So, again, that's the work of all the departments that take, you know, the financial reporting and transparency of our numbers very seriously. So, on behalf of all those folks, thank you very much.
Okay. And now, can I invite Mr. Zankowski and Chief Colarulo and Commissioner Clark, myself, for recognition of Township retirements?
I'd like to ask Deputy Superintendent Andy Block to please join us up here. It's a bittersweet time here to talk about someone who will be leaving Radnor Township after a long and storied career here with Radnor Township. Someone that has spent 27 years here in, wearing the uniform and representing the men and women of this department. Andy, when I got here about seven and a half years ago, Andy was one of the people that I was fortunate to meet along with a lot of the other staff. But Andy was one that was able to welcome me here and tell me about what an outstanding staff of individuals that we have here, and I could tell you, they haven't disappointed at all. It's clear that we have the finest police department anywhere in the Commonwealth and probably in the country here. And it begins with the type of leadership that Andy Block portrays as a person, as an officer, as a leader in the department. Andy's educational background that he's put into this, Andy graduated from Archbishop Carroll High School here in Radnor, completed his ACT 120 certification. He got his Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice and Applied Science from Montco Community College, completed his Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command, completed the FBI National Academy, got his Bachelor's Degree in Liberal Arts from Newman University, and got his Master's Degree in Public Safety Management from St. John's, St. Joe's, sorry, St. Joe's, St. Johns, from St. Joe's. But, you know, the interesting part is getting a grade point average of 3.97 while working full-time is absolutely incredible, and that shows of the type of person that Andy is in everything that he does, that he works on. You know, Andy does an outstanding job. Beginning his career in '86, you know, he worked as a part-time patrolman with the Avalon Police Department, worked his way up through the Montgomery Sheriff's Department in their Warrants Division, with the Plymouth Police Department, hired as a patrol officer in 1990 with Radnor Township. In 2003, he was promoted to detective, in 2005 promoted to sergeant, 2012 promoted to lieutenant, 2013 he established anti-crime team, in 2017 he was promoted to Deputy Superintendent, and today we see Andy, in a few days here, getting ready to leave Radnor Township. You know, as a person, there's no better person, individual, no better police officer than Andy Block. Andy, I tell you, you've done an outstanding job here, well-respected, not only within this community here, but within this entire region. Anywhere you go, anybody you talk to, going to some of the various police gatherings or that, they know Andy, not only in this county and other surrounding counties, and that's a tribute to Andy Block of who he is as a person, who he is as a police officer. And that's something you can only, only, you earn that respect. It's not given, it's earned. And again, Andy, that's who you are. And I'm sorry to see you go, Andy. And, all right, before I give this to you, I'm gonna ask it to some other folks. Bill, if you want to say a few words?
Just real quickly, I had a similar experience when I started here. A few weeks before I actually took over, I had to come in here and get measured for uniforms and, you know, things like that, and the person that greeted me first was Andy Block. And I'll never forget that, you know, your first impressions are lasting ones. And I always was amazed, if you drive around with Andy, he'll point to a house, he'll tell you who lives there, how many kids they have, who lived in that house before they bought it. And I'm not kidding you, that's the kind of guy he is, and he does so much that people don't even know about, like Mr. Zankowski said, driving senior citizens to church on Sundays. I mean, the guy is incredible, and the only thing I'm going to say, when you meet Andy, he makes you want to be a better person. That's the kind of individual he is, so, Andy?
My pleasure. Thank you.
So, I first met Andy as a parent at an ASK meeting at the high school, and, you know, he came in, and he's a police officer, and you're kinda like, but, you know, I was immediately impressed by his care, his concern, the way that he really wanted the schools and the police to work together. I know that during my time on the school board, and, you know, currently, you know, some of the current school board members have echoed this to me, that they really appreciate how Andy has worked so hard with the schools and with our students. I think that is very important, and a credit to him as an officer, because it's not just about policing, it's about making sure that the community understands what the police are doing, and that the police are a place where you can go to them, that they are not something to be feared, but that they are your partners. And they, Andy has definitely worked very hard to make sure, I think, that our community knows that he is our partner, that the police here are our partners. I've had numerous calls from constituents who, you know, have heard about Andy leaving, and, you know, I think I'm safe to echo the words that we are very sorry and sad to see him go, but know that he has a bright and exciting future ahead of him, and we are very thankful and grateful for his service.
Well, as Bob said, we have the best police department around, and I don't just say that because I live here and they do an excellent job. I speak, I have family members who live here now, who lived in other areas of the country. There are people who work in other areas of the country, and people who come here and are here from out of the area comment on how professional and how well-run our police department is. So, that comes from leadership, and we appreciate that, Andy. As a Commissioner, anytime you reached out to Andy, he was there, he was ready to help you out and do whatever you needed, and especially whatever the residents needed. So, we're sorry to see you go, Andy, but we really appreciate all your service to the Township. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what everyone else is saying. I've only been on the Board for a very short while, I think 45 days, but it's amazing the outpouring of support that Andy has had. I've known Andy through reputation, I don't know him well personally, but some of the people who've been involved with the Township for a long time have come to me in the last couple of days and have sort of echoed everything that Chief and Bob Zankowski has said, and it's just, it's kind of overwhelming, but I think that's just a testament to a great body of work, and I wish Andy well in the future.
I'm surprised at how fast word spreads, but I've had similar experiences walking through the sixth ward over the weekend, where people would pull me aside, and just the comment I received the most was, "Andy is one of us," meaning he grew up here, they've watched his career, and they've just cheered on all of his success. So, it is gonna be a big loss to the Township, and I wish Andy all the best in the future.
So, my first experience with Andy was when I was 16 years old. We spoke about this. Now, Andy actually came and talked to our driver's ed class at Harerton High School. So, I understand that you are also a firefighter as well, a glad one? So, it's a remarkable career, you're a remarkable person. Even back then, what, 27 years ago, I won't say how old I am, you were still doing things in the community, in your community, you're a Radnor policeman going into Laura Marion and helping everybody out. So, thank you so much for your service. You really have been just, it's, it's just a total loss of the, not a total loss of the police department, but we are definitely losing someone very, very important and very, very respected. So, thank you.
You know, I think as part of this, what Andy's always tried to make sure is that, you know, police officers, you know, you hear things nationally, and Andy always makes sure and tries to strive for that, you know, our police officers do the best every day, day in, day out. They do the right thing, and they treat everybody the right way, they treat them fairly, and at the end of the day, at the end of their shift, to make sure they go home to their family. When I look at the officers here in the back of the room, you know, he cares about each and every one of them, to make sure that they do the job, that they're trained the best that they can, to make sure they have the best equipment, the best gear, to make sure that they're doing the best for the residents of this community, that they're well-prepared, well-trained, and at the end of their shift, they go home every day. And that speaks volumes to the person that Andy Block is. I'm proud to stand next to Andy every day. I've got the most respect and admiration in doing this job for, geez, it'll be almost 27 years in this role. Andy's someone that is second to none, what he's doing, and Andy, I hate to see you go, but again, I understand too, that, you know, there's more to life than just work every day, and at times, you're always reminded of that, that there's also a personal side and a human side, and that we always don't see that, and sometimes we're selfish, you know, we hate to see, hate to see you go, but we also understand, though, there's a personal side, and, you know, you earn those types of things. So, Andy, on behalf of Radnor Township, on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners here, that hold you in the highest regard, Andy, they hold you very much in high regard, and to the residents and to the entire staff here, and to the men and women of the police department, Andy, congratulations on your retirement. This is presented to Andrew J. Block. Thank you for your many years of loyal and dedicated service, presented today, 2018, for the many years of wonderful service. Andy, congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. President Borowski, I'll make sure that I got five minutes on here, I got the clock running, so, I won't hold people up this evening. I'm a little overwhelmed, and I appreciate all the comments from the Commissioners, Mr. Zankowski and Chief Colarulo this evening. What started out back on May 14th of 1990 turned into an unbelievable journey for me. Never in a million years did I think I would ever have risen to the level of where I'm at within the police department. Alls I wanted to be my entire life was a police officer. I worked in a couple of other police departments, but when I came here in May of 1990, I found a home. And that's what Radnor Township's about, it's about a home and a family. So, as my career progresses through all the years, becoming a training officer, working in the traffic and highway unit, working in detectives, and then becoming a sergeant, there's certain things you pick up, there's certain traits when you start forming your supervision and your leadership. And that was picked up by many different supervisors and leaders that came before us within the police department, and you take bits and pieces from each one of them, what's best, and you put it together, and that's what comes up. But it's not about the leadership that we have here, it's about the men and women of our police department, and standing in the back of the room this evening. That's what makes our job so easy, because they are the epitome of professionalism. They come here every day, they put their lives on the line, their first priority is the department. That's one of the things, that they put the community first, the department, and then their personal safety. So, the community's always first, and that's what sets Radnor Township Police Department apart from any other police department in the United States. And I believe that, you know, and I've embraced that for the last 28 years. And these officers, these men and women do that on a daily basis as well. In addition to that, it's also the staff here in Radnor Township, it's not just the police department. As I stated, it's about a family coming together, and through the thick and thin, the staff in this township always rises to the occasion, and the Commissioners, I have to drive this home with each and every one of you, you have an unbelievable staff here, you need to get to know the staff, all right, and see what they're made of, and their fabric, or their moral fabric and everything that happens here. Back to the police officers, they have the highest level of professionalism and integrity that I've ever experienced, and I've worked for four other police departments. So, it's been an honor and a pleasure to be able to come in here each day and put on this uniform and proudly display this badge and this patch. And I know each and every one of you will continue to honor that tradition and carry that far within your careers. Most importantly, most importantly, rely on your training and go home at the end of the day in a safe manner, return to your families, because your families are the most important thing to you. We're a family here, and you have your family at home. So, I want to leave that with everybody to remember, all right, to rely on your training, I say it all the time, and to go home with your families. But again, it's been an unbelievable, an unbelievable ride. I'd like to thank Mr. Zankowski and Chief Colarulo for providing me with multiple opportunities to improve my professional demeanor, my education, and my standards here. It was through them, when you heard that, you know, I was able to go back to college, I had the opportunity to go to the FBI National Academy, which is something, you know, that I will treasure for the rest of my life and my career. So, again, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work and serve every one of the residents, and that's the most important thing, that's why we're here. We're here for this community. This is, when I started here in May of 1990, it was really a bedroom community, and it's become a vibrant, thriving community, all right? How many other communities do you have where there's at least five high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, private and parochial schools? This Township's second to none, and again, it's because of the staff, all right, and the leadership that occurs within this Township, and we have to continue forging forward on it. So, I would ask the Commissioners to just be mindful of that, to support the staff, and continue to look at different ways to be able to expand that staff, so that we can continue to provide the first-class services to this first-class Township. I'd like to thank everybody, and remain safe, and have a great evening. Thank you. Andy, if we could, if I could have all the officers come on up, and then Andy, if you could take a picture with all the officers, with the Commissioners, that'd be great. Do I have the Commissioners? Go. Squeeze in. Other side. Lay in. Could you get everybody? Stand in front of us, come on, come on. Stand in front of us, come on, come on.
Okay. So, we will move on with public participation, certainly anyone who, if you have anything you'd like to say to Officer Block, that'd be great. So, please, public participation, welcome.
Hi. I first met Andy Block, no. Congratulations, Andy, and thank you. Debbie Singer, 169 South Spring Mill Road, Villanova. I'm here with Amy Schwor, Radnor parent. We just met this morning, and I'm here to let you know about a meeting that was formed kind of last minute, it's concerned parents and residents about guns and safety in our schools. And I actually did think someone thought it was gonna be addressed here. Luke, you know, told me that it was not, at least not tonight, and that you possibly might be partnering with the school district, and I wanted to, you know, if you could tell me what date that meeting would be, is it a Township meeting? Because there's not a school meeting before the March of the kids, the March 14th.
So, I was just gonna say, so I was gonna throw this over to Chief Colarulo, because we have some new news about that, and if you want to share that, Chief?
Yes, Madam President. Obviously, a lot of people are concerned what happened in Florida, and today, in fact, Deputy Flanagan met with the school superintendent and 12 principals regarding providing some type of symposium for the community. But it's a movement, it's happening, and, you know, it's students that are going to make the difference ultimately, and, because they have a lot of passion, and I'm just glad and want to keep the conversation going. I think that's what we want to do. So, thank you.
Debbie, if you're looking for more people, if you want, I'm glad to share it out, if you share the date or any information with the Commissioners, I'm sure.
Monday, 10 o'clock AM, here.
Sure. Yeah, can you send me an email?
Sure, thank you.
Because I can't remember. Thank you.
Now then.
Welcome.
My name is Richard Anthony, 408 Inverary, Villanova, Pennsylvania. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of Radnor Studio 21, one of the largest public access stations in Pennsylvania, perhaps the country, accessible to over 30, 90,000 Comcast and Verizon subscribers in Radnor Township, Lower Merion, Arbuthnot, and surrounding communities up and down the main line. I'm here this evening to introduce Vincent Chelli, who is the new General Manager of Radnor Studio 21, replacing George Strimble, who has stepped down. George was known to many of you. The Board conducted a year-long search to find a qualified candidate to fill the position, in a very important position, in what we consider to be a very important asset to the township. Our search was successful in that we found someone who has the credentials, the background, to implement the strategic plan that was adopted by the Board of Directors of Radnor Studio 21 in 2016. Vince is eager to meet with each of you, with Bob and other members of his staff, to listen, to become familiar, much more familiar with the issues that are always brought to this Board and an important part of the community. I would like, therefore, to introduce Vincent Chelli.
Welcome. We had the opportunity to meet this morning, so thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm only going to take about 30 seconds of your time, literally. It's an honor to be here in Radnor Township, and it's an honor to be General Manager of Radnor Studio 21. I only hope I'll be able to fulfill the big shoes that the Board has fit me with. As Rick just said, in the coming weeks, I'm going to be reaching out to each of you, so I could spend some little face, a little face-to-face time, and finding out how Radnor Studio 21 can help you do your jobs here in Radnor Township. So, again, it's an honor to be here, and thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Welcome to Radnor. Thanks. Good evening.
Good evening, Leslie Morgan, Ward One. Sometimes I like to circle back on to some of the ideas that I come to your meetings to try and push forth. And most of my aims are towards fiscal discipline and doing things more efficient, not that we're doing it poorly, but I think that we can always do things better for the residents. So, one of my aims, when I started coming to these meetings five, six years ago, was that I saw that the processes with which we did these large developments, starting with our Drossen, was a bit chaotic. And it seems to have gained some steam, but I want to keep bringing it to the fore, because I know that Matt, one of our interim Commissioners, brought forth something called a Gateway Enhancement Program. So I'm here to question, where does that stand? What are we going to do about it? Secondly, as we saw with the preliminary plan approval, 145 King of Prussia, I know that you all wanted to get more. I heard that time and again from most of you, especially from Commissioner Clark, he wanted to get more than what was normal. I think that Commissioner Farley felt the same way, and I know that Commissioner Marshall did too. So, we didn't really end up getting it, but all those people came in sort of late stage, except maybe Commissioner Clark, and he was a minority person at that time where it was moving ahead. So I wanted to ask, what are we going to do so that that never happens again? So, you know, poor me, I think that, why does Philadelphia's Board get a free park when they give a zoning change? Why? It's a normal, ordinary thing, you guys. Why didn't we get a park? You give a zoning change, you get something. Villanova is nice, I get it, okay? But they got a zoning change, and we didn't get anything. 145 King of Prussia, Penn is great, I'm not saying anything, but we didn't get anything. And it was because of our processes need to be tightened up. So, in the downtime, before some other big entity comes in, what are we going to do about it? And that's really you guys. So, I would love an update tonight, what you guys are going to do about that. Some of my ideas, which I've said before, are that the condition, existing conditions was one of the reasons why we didn't get any kind of real, meaningful road improvements. And that got sort of switched, that definition. And so I think you could, in your zoning and in your language, tighten up existing conditions. It's really clear what existing conditions does mean. Most people know what that means in the world of real estate. We sort of got circled back, because we have a lot of change in the Board of Commissioners, and there was something said with two plans ago about it with a different owner. Big deal, there was a different owner. Existing conditions is what that building was, and what it was zoned for at that time that now they're going to get a zoning change for. That's the existing conditions definition. You can argue maybe, do you do it at full capacity, or do you do it at a normal capacity? But really, those are the only arguments. It wasn't because, well, maybe we could have gotten an all-office complex, and that would have been more traffic, or the same as what we're proposing. There was never an all-office there. It was basically half lab, half office. I know, it's not exactly half and half, but for this sake here, for five minutes, you had lab and office, which was less parking than all-office, and ergo, that is why they only had 800 parks there, where they would have been required to do 1,800 parks. So yes, we are going to get slammed, and there was ways that we could have avoided it. What are we going to do? That's what I'd like to hear. I know that your residents want to hear that, too. The second idea tonight, I come forth, and I'd like to know what we're going to do about tax assessment. So the one thing that we got, even though 145 King of Prussia was always taxable, and it always should have been taxable, we didn't get anything, because now it's going to be taxable. We got what we always had. What are we going to do about the assessment? Are we going to hire for maybe $13,000, like we did with two associates for another study of another body of water? Will we fork over some money to get a real professional down at the county, so that we don't get ripped off? What are you going to do about that? I'd like to know. I'd like, we'd like to hear from you, not just sitting up there. I want to know, because we've got a primary coming up, your residents want to know. How do you feel about that? Do you want to get fair value? Let's get a third-party hired. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, come on up. Oh. Oh.
Thank you.
That's what we're missing. Thank you.
That's a square peg on a round ball, so just be careful.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Brian McGowan, this is my wife, Joy McGowan. We represent the neighbors of the 900 block of Glenbrook Avenue. If you're not familiar where it is, if you're coming east on Conestoga Road, and you come to the end of Conestoga, you're facing 7-Eleven. On the left is the Yang Ming Restaurant. On the left is the Yang Ming Restaurant. We have had a horrible, horrible parking problem for probably two years. The 900 block goes east to a stop sign. At that stop sign, there's a cul-de-sac on a street called Beatrice. The next block down is the 800 block. Not too long ago, I don't know exactly when, the 800 block had an imposition of permit parking only from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and that solved their parking problem at night. The people who were once parking on the 800 block then migrated their cars at night to Beatrice. The neighbors went berserk, and now that street is no parking any time. As a consequence, our street, the 900 block, has no impositions or constraints for night parking. It's kind of first-come, first-served. The problem is now, we're trying to turn the block around. We have a lot of professionals moved in. We have doctors, we have lawyers, we have engineers, we have architects, we're trying to upgrade our community. We can't park at night, and we have to walk sometimes four or five blocks just to get a parking spot. So, we petitioned with the help of Officer Patrick Lacy, the Traffic Committee, to, we submitted a petition requesting that the 900 block be afforded permit parking only from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, which would make us conform to the 800 block. And it's my understanding that that was approved at the December 20th meeting by the State of Traffic Committee. The last item on your agenda tonight, I think they call it the introduction of the 900 block. And I presume the process is, it's introduced tonight, and if accepted, at a subsequent meeting, it will be adopted, and then at some point, will look like the 800 block. So on behalf of the neighbors, we respectfully request your help. Thanks a lot. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Any additional public comment? I see a Baron. We'll get you.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. Sorry, I've got a little bit of a throat infection, so the scratchiness is out the microphone now. Though I will tilt it towards me. I see a number of issues that I was planning to use opening public comment to discuss tonight, which includes the Mccone Ethics Complaint, and there's going to be a motion, so there'll be public dialogue on that, that's coming up in a bit, as well as some issues involving Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, as requested by Commissioner Abel, which occur under New Business, so I'll save most of my comments for that. But what I wanted to bring to this Board's attention, and the public at large, were three distinct events that happened after the last Board of Commissioners meeting. And they go in chronological order as follows. Following the last Board of Commissioners meetings, there was a series of correspondence submitted to this Board, all the members of it, by a person that this Board appointed to the one quasi-judicial board in Radnor Township, zoning hearing board, and that's Scott Simon. And statements that were made by Scott Simon, and to...
Mr. Sherry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. And I will yield you back your time, I promise, you have four minutes left.
That took a minute.
We are going to be, we're going to be kind of shifting and making sure that we are following our Robert's Rules of Orders, and I'm just going to ask that all remarks be directed to the Chair, that remarks be courteous in language and deportment, and avoid all personalities, so never alluding to others by name or to motives. That's read directly from Robert's Rules. I would just ask that you please try to not call out individuals by name. You're certainly welcome to discuss the issue.
I will name individuals by name. I will not personally insult, I'm going to name individuals by name. So if you're going to rule me, my comments out of order, you're going to have to make a motion. So, with that, may I continue with my comments? Thank you. So...
Mr. Sherry, I will ask that you please adhere to Robert's Rules of Orders. I know that you're very interested in process, and you have, are very interested in Robert's Rules. I've seen you post with regards to that, so I would just ask, I'm going to yield you back your four minutes. I would please ask again.
I have more than four minutes, by the way. I think I spoke for about 20 seconds. Anyhow, the name of the individual who submitted correspondence to this Board was Scott Simon. And it was after this Board had appointed Mr. Simon to a quasi-judicial board in Radnor Township, which is zoning hearing.
Mr. Sherry, I'm going to please ask...
This is a factually accurate chronology. If I'm going to be cut off, you're going to have to make a motion, and then you're going to have to set forth the basis for the motion, Commissioner Borowski. To date, Mr. Scott Simon, appointed to zoning hearing, is factually accurate. Mr. Simon submitting multiple correspondence to this Board is factually accurate. If I want to, I can read to you Mr. Simon's correspondence, which I posted online. It will eat up some time.
You do not need to do that.
I would like to give a short synopsis of it, at least those parts of it, that were not totally incoherent. Then I would like to talk about...
I would ask that you not malign a member of the community, please, Mr. Sherry.
There is no maligning, okay? Portions of Mr. Simon's correspondence are incoherent. If you would like a specific example, I will provide it. Please stop interrupting me. The other two events that occurred since that meeting were the Carfac Advisory Board completely quitting. There was no announcement about that tonight. I had thought with the appointments to Board and Commissions that there would be a brief discussion about that, but they quit entirely, and I learned about that through a news article published by Linda Stein. And it appears to be the impetus for the Carfac group resigning was that their public meetings, that anybody could go in and videotape, when it was learned that those meetings would be televised by the township, that was simply too much, and they resigned en masse. And the third event, which I just learned about a couple days ago, and then it was supplemented with more news today, was that Commissioner Phil R. is being held, remanded, rather, for his criminal trial. He will not be released on bail. Now, all three of those events, though quite different in certain respects, have a certain level of oversight feel to them. When this Board was screening applicants for zoning hearing, it included Mr. Simon, and there was only one member of this Board that declined to support Mr. Simon getting on zoning hearing, and that was Commissioner Booker, who then thereafter appears to have been the target of a fair amount of ire from Mr. Simon in that correspondence. My view of that correspondence was that it was threatening, and it was obscene in certain components, when it was not even coherent.
Excuse me, Mr. Sherry, I think your comments are out of line.
Perhaps I'll just read Mr. Simon's quote verbatim, then, because apparently it's out of line, so I'll read it aloud. So here's what Mr. Simon said in part, because apparently my synopsis of it being profane and out of line is somehow lost on the Chair. So, here's one portion of it.
It's not necessary, Mr. Sherry. We've all received the correspondence, you don't need to read it.
But my comments are out of line, so apparently I'm giving, even though I've posted this publicly...
Isn't this part of an...
Would you please stop interrupting?
Mr. Sherry, let's finish up your public comment.
Okay, John Rice has now interjected. You can direct that advice to the Chair, Solicitor Rice, because she keeps interrupting me.
No personal comments, Mr. Sherry.
No personal comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Rice, please be quiet, okay? The issues, though, in terms of this lack of oversight, and I apologize that my comments are getting a little garbled because of the constant interruptions tonight, were that the way that this Board had opportunity, with each and every one of these entities, to exercise a certain level of oversight. When you screen candidates for your advisory boards, including zoning hearing, you owe it to this township to do proper oversight. And when information is brought to you that demonstrates that a choice you made was perhaps ill-advised, that you take your position as Commissioner seriously and seek to remedy it. And I dare say that reading Mr. Simon's correspondence demonstrates that this is not a person that you want to have on zoning hearing. He doesn't demonstrate judicial temperament. That correspondence makes it quite clear. Now, when it comes to Carfac, these were individuals who, again, quit after the idea of being televised at public meetings was made law. Those were people who joined, who knew that these would be public meetings, who knew anybody could come in and film, and nevertheless quit. And when you make an announcement that you're going to be opening that up for applicants, take that into consideration. Take into consideration the personalities and positions held by people who want to serve on these important advisory boards. And the last example, Phil R., disgusting criminal pervert, who is being held for trial. Now, this is not directed to four of the five up here, because none of you were actually on the Board of Commissioners, other than Commissioner Clark, when news of the criminal investigation of Phil R. broke. But something that Commissioner Clark did that I thought was wise, and it was shared by Commissioner Curly and Commissioner Booker, and that is that there was a move to remove Phil R. as Board of Commissioner President...
Mr. Sherry, you have a minute.
Okay, may I just wrap it up? There were constant interruptions. They had the ability to reme... the way that this board had opportunity, with each and every one of these entities, to exercise a certain level of oversight. When you screen candidates for your advisory boards, including zoning hearing, you owe it to this township to do proper oversight. And when information is brought to you that demonstrates that a choice you made was perhaps ill-advised, that you take your position as Commissioner seriously and seek to remedy it. And I dare say that reading Mr. Simon's correspondence demonstrates that this is not a person that you want to have on zoning hearing. He doesn't demonstrate judicial temperament. That correspondence makes it quite clear. Now, when it comes to Carfac, these were individuals who, again, quit after the idea of being televised at public meetings was made law. Those were people who joined, who knew that these would be public meetings, who knew anybody could come in and film, and nevertheless quit. And when you make an announcement that you're going to be opening that up for applicants, take that into consideration. Take into consideration the personalities and positions held by people who want to serve on these important advisory boards. And the last example, Phil R., disgusting criminal pervert, who is being held for trial. Now, this is not directed to four of the five up here, because none of you were actually on the Board of Commissioners, other than Commissioner Clark, when news of the criminal investigation of Phil R. broke. But something that Commissioner Clark did that I thought was wise, and it was shared by Commissioner Curly and Commissioner Booker, and that is that there was a move to remove Phil R. as Board of Commissioner President.
Mr. Sherry, you have a minute.
Okay, may I just wrap it up? There were constant interruptions. They had the ability to remove Phil R. as BOC President, and that's what Commissioner Clark attempted to do, and Commissioner Curly, and Commissioner Booker, but there were three members of the BOC that blocked that, okay? And that was Commissioner Higgins, who's now off the board, and Elaine Paul Schaefer, your predecessor, Commissioner Barowski, and John Nagel, who's still on the board, okay? Again, that goes to oversight. When this board has information placed before it, please act on it, and if necessary, mitigate the damage done to this township once you come into possession of information that you really cannot refute. And I'm not in any way trying to draw an equivalency with not wanting to be videotaped, which is Carfac, or when it comes to Mr. Simon, seen and threatening correspondence, and the terrible crimes of Phil R. But all of that, all of that activity can be weeded out at the screening process and also addressed through timely due diligence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. Any additional public comment? Take your time, Baron.
I'm Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind the community of one of the five annual blood drives that Radnor residents Dan and Michelle Skolnick and their daughter Emily hold in honor of Michelle's mother, Carol Axelrod. The next one is this Friday, March 2nd, at Shipley School, from 9:00 to 7:00. It's, plenty of slots still available, and as probably most of you know, during this time of year, blood is critically short, so this is a particularly good event to be having. You can find out more information or sign up for the Carol H. Axelrod Memorial Blood Drive either at CHABloodDrive.org or at RedCrossBlood.org. And they've been running this for, I don't know, it's got to be 10 years, I don't want to say, because I'm sure I'll screw it up. And it's just, it's a great event. The next one after that will be May 8th in this very room, for those of you that plan that far ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Baron. Any additional public comment? Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Kelly Martin, Ward 7. And I wanted to, actually, the Carol Axelrod Blood Drive is amazing. She was just a fantastic woman in our community, ran the best preschool, and so I highly recommend partaking in that, as Baron said. And I don't want to be repetitive, but as far as Mr. Sherry was discussing, when the three voted to keep Phil R. on as Board of Commissioner President, it, I think it creates a situation where the residents become just simply irate, because we listen to three Commissioners, Commissioner Higgins, Commissioner Schaefer, and Commissioner Nagel speak in defense after finding out they had previously been briefed on the nature of the crimes that Phil R. was indicted for. It's disgusting. I mean, it's just clearly, it's, they described in the article today, he's a depraved human being. I mean, his crimes are disgusting. And so, when three members of this board, who, there's only one left on the board that voted, it was John Nagel, and Elaine Schaefer has already left, and as Mr. Higgins has already left, too, thank you. And it puts everyone on edge, and you think, I can't miss a minute, because how is it possible that our board could actually stand in defense of keeping this person as Board President? So, even the article that came out today stated, "Phil R., Board of Commissioner President." He was the president when all of that happened, and Mr. Clark tried to remove him, Mr. Booker tried to remove him, Mr. Curly tried to remove him, and it was blocked. It's really disappointing, and it puts, I think, the whole, all the residents on edge. And that brings me to, tonight, we're going to find out, it's 127 days since the Mccone paper, that document was leaked, and I will speak more on that later, but I am so excited to find out who the person was, who did, who was the leak. So, it could have been someone on the Ethics Board, it could be somebody that works within the township, and I'm looking forward to getting to the bottom of that. I know that Mr. Rice was given 30 days by the board, and then it was extended, and then it was just kind of unopen-ended. So, I'm looking forward to tonight actually getting the answer that the public has waited for, because clearly we're paying attorney fees during all of this. The fact that that attachment was in the filing, it should never have been accepted by the Ethics Board, and somehow, within 48 hours of it being presented, it was accepted, and they began deliberating on it, which is insane. So, I'm really looking forward to getting to the bottom of that tonight, too. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay. All right, shall we move on? Finance and Audit. Mr. White.
Well, hold on, we have, I think we have Commissioner Farhi, number six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my gosh. I'm so sorry, Commissioner Farhi. Excuse me. Yes, the Ward 7 Initiative, requested by Commissioner Farhi.
Should I? You're there.
Wherever you're comfortable. Do you need a microphone?
It's only been a month since I've... I'm not that... Should we use a pointer? It's only four slides. Hit that button to go to the next slide.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm here, I represent some of the members in Ward 7, and I want to talk, just in general, about Villanova University, and what I would like to see go forward with Villanova, with Villanova as well as, sorry, with Villanova and the ward and the township. Villanova University, they do have an economic impact to our township, but there are also some drawbacks from them. When it comes to our residential neighborhoods, there's increased traffic, there's been increased pollution, increased noise, and at times Villanova, in my opinion, seems reluctant to help solve those issues. With all the new construction, we want to make sure that there's pedestrian safety for both our residents as well as the students there. Again, with the CICD and the new Penn Medicine, traffic in and around Villanova, the surrounding through streets and neighborhoods, the traffic's going to be increasing. So, the people that live at Barley Cone and that neighborhood, Old Oaks, as well as Conestoga Village, Garrett Hill, et cetera, and Aldwin Lane, were experiencing much, much more traffic. Villanova University is tax exempt, so for the most part, they do pay some taxes, but very, very minimal taxes. And Villanova does use, they do draw our fire, police, EMS, hazmat, as well as our, as well as our streets as well. And finally, again, just piggybacking on that, because they don't pay much in taxes, they don't pay any property tax, it is a very, very, it's cumbersome to our bottom line when it comes down to the budget. So, in the past, something called a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, and we have seen other institutions in the area, so the Barak Hebrew Academy has done that, the Valley Forge Military Academy, they say, hey, we are not, we don't have to pay taxes, but we do want to help the community out. And Villanova has declined to do that. So, what I would suggest, in lieu of, in lieu of a pilot, Villanova in the past, they have suggested that they would help with projects in lieu of giving money. So, I'm suggesting three things right now, that I would hope that, if it's the people at Villanova, if they can hear, and this is something that we can bring up to the Care Committee, that there be pedestrian improvements to the sidewalk along Lancaster Avenue from Garrett Avenue to Barley Cone. We previously tried to get a grant for that, and that grant was denied, so hopefully Villanova, in conjunction with the township, could reapply for that grant, and hopefully we would have a little bit more success. I would also like to see a joint project with SEPTA, PICO, Radnor Township, as well as Villanova University, to beautify what I call Garrett Hill East, and that is the north side of Conestoga Road, from the trolley overpass to the corporate complex. And I think Villanova, with us, again, we could work on a grant to try to get money to beautify that. Right now, it's very, it doesn't look very nice, there's a kind of retaining wall with a lot of rocks and power lines. And that is the first thing that people see as they enter into Radnor, coming from, say, Yang Ming to Radnor. And that is, to the people that come, that, you know, that live in Garrett Hill, the students, et cetera, and there are a lot of employees that work for Villanova that live in that area, that's the first thing. So, I think that would help beautify the area. And then finally, beautification of Aldwin Lane. This is pretty easy, just plant some trees, create a buffer for the residents, and this, there's also a natural habitat there, there's some springs, and it's a nice little area of open land. We don't have a lot of open land in Ward 7. We have three parks, Unkerford, Emmental, and Clemecrone, and then we have this little tiny area in, it's called the Aldwin Lane Triangle, and just some trees, maybe some wildflowers, this could be done at a minimal cost. So, that's pretty much what I have, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
I'll just kind of add on. I think, you know, Leslie in her comments asked about this Gateway Enhancement Trust. There are reasons why it's not on the agenda tonight. We have considered the timing of one application that would have, you know, significant sort of contributions if we were to go ahead and initiate something like this. So, I think, I think, Sean, you're on the right course here, but I'd like to see it done collectively, and I think you're hitting the right, you know, geography. I think if this is Villanova's backyard, it probably makes sense for them to pick up some of these, some of these different projects. As you get further west, you have more stakeholders along the Route 30 corridor, and what I would hope is the board, once we get past, you know, some of these larger applications, like 145 King of Prussia Road, that we initiate some type of, I guess, in your acronym pilot, it's a payment in lieu of taxes, but it can also be a per-project type of contribution. But, you know, my sense is there are plenty of ways we can make the township look aesthetically better, and we can clean up trash, and we can do installations and plannings. So, I would be for it, but I think we can't do it on sort of a piecemeal basis, so I think we have to look at it comprehensively. And I, you know, Villanova might be the place to start, because they don't have an application before us at this time.
So, I guess I'd echo what Commissioner Marshall says. You know, one of the things, when you brought up the Gateway Enhancement District, I said, is there a way to, you know, make that more broad, to include Garrett Hill, if there's some sort of branding, and we carry that up into North Wayne? Is there something that can spill over into, you know, the other wards as well, where there is, you know, a business district? You know, I think, you know, I think that Villanova should pay its fair share. I think that, I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, do we wait for, you know, as you said, Matt, make it kind of a whole, you know, a whole package, or do we try to start just there? And then, I guess my question is, is what do we do if they say no?
Well, that's, they have the option to say no, as we all know, and I believe that they've done in the past. I mean, I think that this gives, you know, our ward and the whole community, I think that we could make this thing great. I think a sidewalk to Wayne and a sidewalk to Bryn Mawr, you know, you can put little placards on there and have a Villanova, you know, something small Villanova Hall of Fame. If they want to invest in our community, you know, let them, let them have, make it fun. I mean, Villanova is a big part of our community, and we should definitely embrace that. I would just personally, and a lot of my residents would like to see, for the amount of resources that they draw upon, you know, they, they do, they have the right to, what I feel, is hide behind this, this tax shelter, so to speak. They have that right, but I would think that, you know, in the, we've been good neighbors, and I would like to see that, that done in return. As far as the gateway, you know, I know, Commissioner Marshall, you are working on something like that, and I think that's great for that part of the township, but I think you're a Garrett Hill boy, is that right?
I grew up on Peachwood Drive, which is, yeah.
Okay. So, I just think from that, you know, there's a little sign right near Yang Ming, and then you go through the underpass, and then it's like, oh, okay, and then you hit some of the restaurants and the commerce, and then you kind of get a little sidly kind of college feel to it. But it's that just initial, it's almost like blight when you see the trolley tracks and the rocks and the weeds, and, and it's just, it's not anything, it's a hard project to, you know, to get going, because you're dealing with SEPTA, you're dealing with PICO, and you'd have to deal with the township as well as hopefully Villanova. So, it's not going to happen overnight, but I think if we start the conversation and start the process, we'll be, we'll be much better with that.
Is Villanova willing to try to work with us to get grants, the way Eastern and Cabrini are working with us to get grants for the, that intersection there? I don't know, Bob, if you can answer that.
The, I'll start with Conestoga Road. We've actually did receive a grant, some grant money on that, and we actually do have some design plans for that. In regards to the Aldwin Triangle, I know that that was part of the CICD, which the property is owned by Villanova, so that would be one that, in the overall big plan, the big scope, that I know Matt has talked about, and we've spoken about, with the bigger idea and the bigger plan of meeting with all the different institutions, of, you know, working on the master plan of this, but we do have some drawings. In regards to the sidewalk, we did partner on that application with Villanova, PennDOT, which I thought that one, we stood in a very good position. When you have PennDOT, you have Villanova University. The township, we had a number of community groups as well participating in that. It's just, they ran out of money, and unfortunately, with bigger projects, we usually ended up on the shorter end of the stick, so that would be one that I would think if we had a sit-down, probably, and maybe invited Villanova to come and sit down with the township, this is one that their students use right now to traverse from the campus to Lower Marion, and I'm sure when those dorms are actually utilized, their students will now be on that side of the street, will use that now more and more. So, I think that will allow us an opportunity to have that further discussion. So, I think that as we develop this further, this is one that we can, we can look at even further, but again, too, is, you know, we have proposed these types of, you know, pilot programs, and they did, as you did point out, they have said, we don't want to give money in the way of a pilot, but bring us projects, and we would look, we would look to participate. So, this is one that, you know, you could, you could pitch to them. So, that is one that we do look at. You know, I know that when we look at, you know, zoning changes and those, the board's got to step very gingerly on those, and, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we can, we can actually do swaps for improvements for that, because I think maybe John O'Leary's done.
Yeah, let me just address that, because Leslie's brought this up before, and I addressed it once before, a couple years ago. Zoning changes, it would be illegal for the township to get a park, which was the example, in exchange for a zoning change. That can't be done. Zoning changes, it come in, they're legislative actions, and they have to stand on their own merits. It's good or it's not good under the planning and under the zoning that comes in front of a board. Anybody that comes in with a zoning change makes an argument that this is a good thing for the township. People take the opposite position, it's not a good thing for the township. So, zoning changes, and I don't know what Philadelphia does, but they are subject to the same rules as Radnor Township. They're a different kind of home rule municipality, they have a little different law that they have to apply to. They are not subject to the municipality's planning code, however. They have their own zoning to some extent, so they can make their rules a little bit differently. Radnor is subject to the municipality's planning code, and the way things has to happen has to be in accordance with that law. There is no, pay us money and we'll change zoning. That, it can't be done that way. And, and I could certainly put this in writing, and we can have that debate, Leslie, because...
I think we need to bring up the townships and tell them how they got their things going.
There's, there's things that get negotiated in the course of subdivisions and land developments, but not zoning changes. So, you really shouldn't be promoting that, because there's people that have gone to jail for what you're describing.
But I think maybe, too, is what Leslie's talking about, the subdivision... But I think maybe too is what Leslie's talking about, the subdivision and land development. Those are things where, as a township, we have not taken full advantage of those types of things.
And I agree with that.
Which, and I think that's where Leslie's at because we have not fully taken advantage of those types of things. And I'm not, because I think we, and Leslie, I'm not going to speak for you, but I think these are a lot of items...
Please don't because I don't want to break any rules.
This is not a debate. This is just...
Well, and I think that we have not taken full advantage in a lot of these issues where we have not partnered with a lot of folks. We have not taken advantage in a lot of these areas where, as Leslie has spoken of, we have left a lot of money on the table to offset a lot of public improvements that we have ended up either missing out on or we have ended up as the taxpayer shouldering a lot of those expenses. And I think like what Matt is looking at here, where we're looking at partnering with a lot of these individual businesses and institutions as their way to participate with us to enhance the gateways and public infrastructure of this community is a way in which we can do that. So I agree with Leslie. We have left a lot of money on the table.
And I would never want to break the law, John, but I can give you ad hoc examples that are non-Philadelphia based. In fact, one at Lissiter in Newtown Township, where they had to do a 50-acre park plus a maintenance fee for the life of forever, in perpetuity. And maybe it wasn't a quid pro quo, but something got done, you guys, and it gets done all the time.
Understood. My thought is maybe put this topic on the agenda in the future. We can dedicate some time to it.
Maybe we could convene the Community Development Committee.
Happy to do it.
Can I just, two things real quick. So before this, my train of thought, yeah, so we can talk about some of this stuff at the CARE meeting, and that's kind of what this is leading into. There are also other environmental issues and such as well. And Bob, if you don't mind, could you just give the number and just a brief history of what Villanova has? So we, the township, and I don't know who, if any board members here tonight were actually on the board when it happened, when they signed off on the CICD. What has Villanova, they've done, it's like a $200 or $300 million project. What have, what have they given the township when it comes to improvements or money or stuff along those lines? I understand they gave about $1 million in permits and then some traffic. Just, I don't know if you...
Well, I'm going to refer to Bill on the permits, but the permits are actually cover, you know, inspection fees and those types of things. But as part of the CICD, roughly it's about a $200, $250 million development project. Received somewhere around $175,000 in park impact fees. Right.
So out of a $270 million, they've...
$250 million.
We've received approximately $100,000?
About $175,000.
Okay, so we'll round it and say 200, okay.
And the permitting fees.
What were they required, what were they required to give?
The permit fees, you have to, I mean, a permit fee is something you have to pay. It's like if I go on the turnpike, I have to pay my fee.
Correct.
So it's not that they didn't do anything additional. They just paid what they were required to pay. That $175,000, that was for...
Was the park impact fees, which were used towards Clemecron Park. That's what was used for that.
Okay.
That's a requirement. That's true, true.
Okay.
So that's what they were required.
They've paid everything that they were required to pay?
What they were required to pay. That's correct.
What previous boards conditioned them to pay. They've fulfilled that obligation?
That is correct.
Okay.
The whole point of what I'm trying to say is that in the past Villanova has said, in the past, we haven't been a good neighbor. And what I am trying to do is bring projects and bring light on ways they could be a better neighbor, and they could honor that commitment that they have set in the past.
Okay, so Luke just brought up the thought of bringing this before commissioners as an agenda item. And, you know, the thing that I think, Bob, it's sort of like we have to work two ends toward the middle. The funding is going to be, to be determined, to be determined, and we're not going to, we're not going to be prejudiced upon one applicant if they're coming before us, right? So we have to be able to talk through that as a board and figure out how that, that's going to work from a partnering standpoint. But in the meantime, and I would bring this, Luke, as sort of a condition on, if we make a resolution in the future, that the township needs to start creating a list of items that we need done. And we did this two years ago. We looked at the gateway. We said, all the shrubs along 30, all the trash that collects. My constituents are talking about the trash along North Wayne Avenue and the cigarettes and all of the planners that have to get replaced. So if this isn't someone's volunteer, you know, sort of initiative, we should get someone who has professional experience, help us draft a list of projects to be done while we're figuring out how we get these institutions to pay, to help us pay for them, a partner, right?
Right. And we had that for Villanova. What we did is we presented to the board items that along with their development, curbs, sidewalks, replacement of streetlights, something that had an impact to their institution, but also the impact to the community, tying that together so that not only for what we were looking for in improvements, but also benefited them. And those were not approved by the board.
Yeah, and I, Bob, you have a new board here, and I think everybody that I've heard talk about this is interested in figuring out how to do it. And just to remind you, this goes back 10 years, but the clock tower in Wayne that's across the street from the movie theater, the mile markers, the Karen and the Griffin that are at Route 30 and 476, the painting under the underpasses on Church and Brook and Conestoga Roads, those were all done as a private-public partnership. So it's been done before. We just have to figure out how we institute the next phase.
I agree. I agree.
Bill, you may be able to answer this. So in Sean's presentation, he mentions Villanova pays very little taxes. I don't know what that means. I've also heard they need to pay their fair share. I don't know what that means. So can you add a little bit more clarity if that's public information? What does Villanova pay?
Sure. They have a handful of properties that are outside of their exempt purpose that do contribute some real estate tax, but it's a very small amount. I don't have it memorized. I don't have the information tonight. I can definitely put that together. Like the conference center, right, Bill? That's one that they pay tax. Yes, yes, yeah.
Do they pay on the, sorry, on the two office buildings, the San Antares?
I'm not, I don't have it memorized.
And then the only other tax, my understanding that they would pay would be the merc tax, which is what, .025 on all sales? Is that correct?
Well, the business privilege in merc tax is three mils.
Okay.
After the first $25,000. That, that information is not public. There's the taxpayer bill of rights that protects that from being...
So they don't even have to disclose that?
We're not permitted to discuss it in public without their consent. So that's not something we can dive into here. But we can get into all the details about the real estate tax. They do pay the stormwater fee. They do pay their share on the sanitary sewer rent.
Sure, but those are fees. Those are not taxes. So I just want the terminology to be correct. They're required to pay that. So it's not that, you know, I, my personal feeling is that if they could hide behind this tax shield, they would say, hey, we don't, we won't pay it. That's why we have to call it a fee as opposed to a tax. I'm like, I mean, I don't know if anyone here is going to agree with that, but that's the reason why these things are called fees and not taxes.
But they're not hiding behind it. It's not hiding when it's their legal classification. That would be saying every 501(c)(3) that doesn't pay a tax is hiding.
So I will, I will get into it. There...
I think...
No, no, no. Let me, please let me answer the question. So when you have a $700 million endowment, you have people that work their job, they get paid to fundraise. Fundraise. That is their job, fundraise, as it is a 100% profit. I mean, other than paying for the phone call, for the phone line, as well as what you're paying those people, that's it. It's 100% profit. When, when, when that happens, and who is it? Lowry gave a million-dollar donation, and the, the give back to the community, to which, as I said, to which that we, they use, they use our fire, I mean, they use our fire, they use our EMS, and there's always a deficit there, our hazmat, our lighting, et cetera, and they don't give back. And when they say they want to be better neighbors and they don't, yes, that's a problem. That is a problem.
But it's not hiding behind. You just want them to pay more money.
No, I think, do I want them to pay more money? I think that if they want to be the good neighbors that they say that they are, they should pay more money. They should help the community out because they use our resources. And to a certain extent, yes, they are hiding behind, they are hiding behind a tax, the tax exemption because they're just trying to raise, they're trying to raise money. They are, don't kid yourself. They're the biggest business in the township, bar none, period.
Okay. They're not, okay, I agree with what Commissioner Abel's saying. They're not hiding behind, they are a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt organization. So it is, you know, that is, that is what they are, and that is what they do. So I think what, you know, in order to kind of wrap this up, I feel like Bob, you know, had some good points. I think that, you know, Commissioner Marshall and Commissioner Clark, you know, the idea of maybe putting this on the agenda or maybe even convening the Community Development Committee where we can have, you know, a more full, broad discussion and talk about it. Or if you want to take it back to the VU CAREs, you know, I think I hear that there is some support, you know, there is support on the board to do that. I don't want, though, Villanova to be, you know, I don't, we shouldn't be maligning them because they're a nonprofit, because that's what they are. You know, I think it's, I think that, you know, I think that moving forward with those, you know, with an ask on those or working through the VU CAREs committee and working through Mr. Zinkowski is a good idea. And then maybe we can talk about, you know, a more full and broad opportunity with the...
Let me just say one more thing. So when you have a championship T-shirt that you sell for $40 and you don't have to pay any taxes on that, yeah, you're a for, don't kid yourself, you're a for-profit.
All right. All right. So let's wrap this up. We are, so the CARE Committee is going to analyze that, those issues that he brought up. That's my understanding. We'll get some sort of recommendation or feedback from them. And then Matt, in terms of these, these large entities that come in and develop, and what we can do to improve our negotiations if needed is something we can take...
Yeah, and I just, we have to front-end this. We have to do it in a process where we're not holding one entity up on one approval, as John said, you know, because you can't do that. So I think the list has to start sooner rather than later. And I would go as far as saying, we know what, you know, the improvements could be. You know, the dollar volume is fairly high, and we should get a professional who can help us create some of these, you know, some of these ideas before we have another applicant come forth.
And I think we need to look at it even more broad sense, you know, to, you know, some of the concerns around traffic. You know, what, so it's, to me, it's, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty broad. There's not just, you know, about trash and beautification and things like that, which is certainly, you know, I think we do need that in various areas. But I think looking at the traffic too, so that's part of this running list that you described. And some of that is, you know, things that we maybe need to study moving forward is some of the things with the Penn project are implemented. You know, what does that look like, and how can we take that and, you know, push it out further so that as things are, you know, as travel, people travel through the community, you know, we're addressing things so that we kind of help that flow as best we can.
Yeah, and just, you know, just to clarify, we're talking, I mean, Bob and I have talked about a list of five or six stakeholders in that general area, and the school district maybe another. So, I mean, it's not like we're kind of singling out one or two of these applicants. It's, it's a broader group of partners, really, is what we're looking for.
All right. Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Farhi. So we'll move on to committee reports. We've got finance and audit. So Mr. White, you're on with the quarterly 2017 finance update.
All right, I'll wait. Ian, if you could switch over to my computer. All right, so in the, in the interest of time, what I was planning on doing tonight is give the condensed version of this. All of the slides for the full presentation were included in the packet. They're up online. At the same time, the full presentation is also on the township's website under Board of Commissioner Presentations. If you go to Board of Commissioners and there's a Board of Commissioner Presentation button, all of these types of presentations are housed there on that page, so you can find it there. So with that said, what I will step through here is taking a look, as we do each quarter, the general fund. This is obviously the fourth quarter of 2017, how we ended up. And then also look at our sanitary sewer fund, our stormwater fund, and then how the pension fund assets performed in 2017. So on the revenue side, the revenues ended up ahead of expectations or ahead of budgets. We had some mixed results. If you're aware, the township had a real estate tax prepayment program. We ran that the last two weeks of 2017, which basically opened up or offered the opportunity for residents to prepay their 2018 real estate tax. That generated $1.2 million. That's, on a cash basis, that's revenue realized in 2017. But really, that's just an advance payment of what we would otherwise received in the spring of 2018. So we just, we received that a little early. On the business tax side, they came in slightly under what we had budgeted, which was roughly 5.7% increase. That's the business privilege. The actual increase was at 2%. So while we missed the expectations a little bit, it's, the tax base continued to grow, which was a positive sign. As we just talked about a little bit, the development side, on the permitting, revenue was extremely strong last year. We were $1.4 million ahead of schedule because of the Villanova project. We talked about how much permitting revenue was generated. That's the ballpark we were in. Roughly a million of that is due to Villanova. The other $400,000 was other, other types of permitting revenue in 2017. Departmental earnings ended up right on track with what we had budgeted for. And then our police enforcement and parking revenue, they missed expectations. For those who might be hearing that for the first time, through the first three quarters of last year, we kind of knew that was going to happen as a result of the one major parking lot in Wayne, the South Wayne parking lot, being shut down for the entire year because of the library construction. So we, we were anticipating missing the mark a little bit on that front. On the expense side, you'll see, when we look at the numbers, that we basically landed right where we thought we were going to. Again, like the revenues, there were mixed results. Payroll and related costs were significantly below budget, and then they were down 6% from 2017. Again, for the folks that are new, the Board of Commissioners adopted a reorganization in May of 2017, and also adopted changes in the collective bargaining agreement, which changed the healthcare program. The combination of those two generated the savings there. And then we have large negative variances in engineering as a result of being behind on catching up with our escrow reimbursements. That was something that was reported throughout the year and something we're still working on. And then during the budget season, we spent a great deal of time talking about what was going on in the sewer fund. Ultimately, by December 31, we had transferred $1.75 million of general fund money to the sewer fund to cover a portion of the emergency projects that, for the sewer pipes that broke in the second half of last year. A quick look at the numbers for the general fund. It's $34.3 million was the total revenue estimate for last year. We ended $2 million ahead of that. When you take out the real estate tax prepayment, the more true variance was roughly $912,000 or 3% ahead of, ahead of estimates. So in all accounts, given the fact that the business taxes are such a large percentage of the revenue base, hitting or exceeding the marks is always a good sign. On the expense side, the total expense budget for the year is $34.9 million. We ended at $34.8 with the variance of $16,000. Again, that wasn't pinpoint budgeting more than it was just coincidence of a lot of different factors falling into line. As I noted, we had the significant savings from the payroll and related costs. Those were offset... offset by the, the, the variance in the escrows coming out of the engineering department, as well as the unbudgeted 1.75 million needed from the general fund to the sewer fund. Otherwise, the expense variance would have been larger. So revenues were a little bit ahead of where we thought they'd be. Expenses were right in line. And what that means, when you take a look at the, the cash for the township is, the blue line represents where we had budgeted to be on a monthly basis throughout last year. The gray line is where we actually ended up. So you could see throughout last year, we were ahead of the, ahead of the line, and ultimately, we ended there as well. Then, when you look at the table, we had targeted to be, to end with about $8 million in cash in the general fund, and we ended up with the 11.5, or 11.6. So with the positive variance there. We'll get into a lot more details as to what that means and how those funds get distributed. If you recall during the budget, a lot of those, a lot of the excesses were earmarked to fund this year's capital program. So a lot of that variance has already been spent. But the good news is, is that we realized it at the same time. So it's, it's there. Switching gears over to the sewer fund. On the revenue side, the, the revenues did a little bit better than we thought they would by about 250,000, due in large part to a, a late fall, early winter amnesty program that was offered for accounts that had fallen behind. We gave folks roughly a month to catch up, free of any penalty and interest. So that generated, generated some late year revenue that, that brought that, that created that variance, that positive variance. And then when you look at the, the fund balance chart in the lower right, the light green line represents what we thought it was going to be. Once, once we started entering the costs for the emergency sewer projects, a combination of moving the general fund money into this fund, as well as the fact that the emergency sewer expenses had not yet starting, started to be realized, that, so we ended with significantly more cash in the fund than we thought we would. But in the first six months of this year, we're going to, we're going to chew through that because the project expenses are now coming in. And I should have made this clear at the, the outset of the presentation, that this is all on a cash basis. So, and, so when the cash is spent, that's when we're recognizing it. And on the revenue side, when it's deposited, that's, that's when it's being realized or accounted for. On the storms, yeah, the stormwater fund side, the revenue activity came in exactly as anticipated. The annual revenue generated by the, the fee is a little over $1 million. As reported in each of the years that we've had this fee, it, these revenues perform right in line with where we would expect them to be. So there's not a whole lot of variation. On the revenue side of this fund, for those that have paid attention for a while, or for a few years, the, the larger discussion is on the expense side and how to start investing these funds into, to projects. But on the revenue side, things behaved exactly as we would have thought. Finally, we incorporated the pension fund performance about a year ago as a result of ongoing conversations about the funding of the pension program. We, at the, and it was something that was recommended by Carfac, because every year, we'll, we'll have a pretty detailed conversation about how we're doing with our pension funds. And at the center of those conversations is always, how are the assets performing in the market? So we added this to the quarterly reviews. So for 2017, as you would expect, with a, a portfolio that's 60% equities, 40% fixed assets, that the, the returns were very positive for 2017, a little over 15% growth. The target is 7.5%. So we, we doubled the target for 2017. What that means going forward is that, all things being equal, there'll be a, an actuarial gain realized by the funds. And that flows through to the annual pension expense, and it will bring that down slightly by a, an amount that's amortized over a 15-year period. So it, I, the, the calculation's difficult to do on, in your head, but we'll, we'll see, we'll see that benefit in about a year and a half when we do our next actuarial update. But the, this is a different trend versus prior years where that number was, the actual number was either at or below the target. So it's nice to be ahead of the curve for So in, in summary, for the general fund, we basically landed where we thought we would, maybe slightly ahead of that. We would have landed further ahead of that if we didn't have the unexpected breaks in the sewer fund. The 2018 budget includes, includes financing a reimbursement back to the general fund. So we're working on that now. The reason why we don't have it put together yet, as I noted earlier, the, the costs of those emergency sewer projects are still a, a little bit unknown. So what we don't want to do is shoot too high or too low on that. We want to make sure we got the number buttoned up, and then we'll bring that back to the board. And ultimately, what that'll do is, it'll put the cash back in the sewer fund, the sanitary sewer fund, and we'll make the general fund whole, which will bring the general fund balance back up to where it would have otherwise been. So that's, that's the condensed version of the presentation. Like I said, all of the slides which go into departmental detail, both, both in revenue and expenses, as well as a four-year history on all revenues and expenses, all those, all that information's in the full presentation. So they're either in the packets, or you can go online and, and check it out.
Great. Thank you, Bill. You did a great job hitting the highlights, because it is quite an extensive presentation that is online. So, you know, hopefully, anyone who's interested will, will take a look. But thank you for all your hard work and for that presentation. Do any of the commissioners have any questions? Any questions? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you, Bill. I guess the only thing I'm going to say is, we need to spend that sanitary sewer fund money, or this, the sewer, stormwater fee money. So let's get some projects. We need to get moving with that. Okay. Next on the agenda is the introduction of ordinance 2018-01.
Hold on, we got the motion to approve the ethics.
Oh, gosh. Why do I keep skipping things? I apologize. Personnel Administration, the motion to approve the release of the report on the Mccone Ethics Complaint. So there, do I have a motion on the floor to go ahead and do so?
I second.
Uh, no. I need someone to make the motion.
I make a motion.
I need a second. Okay, so no second for?
Here's, here's my suggestion, okay? Commissioner Booker, so I'm all for releasing this. I have no issue with it. Commissioner Booker is away, and he asked me to table this so that he can be here to make a statement about it and opine on it. Okay? So I told him I would make that motion. I told him I would support that motion. I don't see the harm in pushing it off for two more weeks. So with that being said, I will move the table, the motion to approve the release of the report on the Mccone Ethics Complaint, to the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So is there, does anybody want to discuss it?
Yeah, I would like to discuss it. You know, I mean, the fact that he's here, he's not here, it's, the report is the report. And at this point, it needs to be disseminated. Enough time has gone by, and enough of the players, I mean, it's out there, and we need to, it needs to go out there, and this, this needs to end. So we, as a board, can move forward.
I agree with Commissioner Farhi. The, the report is the report. No matter what Commissioner Booker says with regards to it, it's not going to change the results of the report. You know, if he wants to speak on it at a later date, I'm certainly glad to make time on the agenda for that. But I promise the, you know, the community, this will be on the agenda for release. I fully support releasing it, and I do not support the motion to table this.
So I'll agree with my colleagues in the sense that the report is the report. I mean, it's written, it's not changing. But Commissioner Booker is, you know, he's named in the ethics complaint, and he is the focus of, well, not the focus of the investigation, but he's also tied to the investigation. So I would like to, for him to be here, to have a chance to, you know, say whatever he has to say about, you know, his thoughts on the investigation and the conclusions, and not have to wait a week or two when, when he gets back in town. And I agree, I, I was ready to, to release it tonight as well. I didn't realize that Commissioner Booker was not going to be here this evening. So it's unfortunate. I, I don't see a reason why I'm not going to vote to release it at the next meeting. But I would like Commissioner Booker here to be able to say whatever comments he has regarding the investigation.
Well, I mean, if you believe in transparency, the way I believe in transparency, then you would think that, since it's out there and nothing's going to change, and Mr. Booker, if he wants, he can write an email as he's done. I mean, there's, nothing can stop Rich Booker from, from speaking, or getting his opinion, or his view out there. The fact that he's not here, he's not here of his own volition, is why he's not here. The report is the report. It needs to get out. There are other people involved in the report, and they don't have to be here. There are other names involved. They don't have to be here. He doesn't deserve any more speaking rights than anybody else. That is the report. Enough time has gone by. Enough of this. It needs to get out. We need to move on as a board.
Well, the report wouldn't even be necessary if individuals would have come forward and just identified how certain documents landed in their hands. So you're right, I didn't even want, I would have liked this to be resolved back in December. We didn't need to get to this point. But we're at this point. We've waited. Ms. Martin's got the count. And, you know, I'm sorry, but I think we're going to have to count 14 more days.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'm, I will go ahead and call the vote on, oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Is there any staff, is there any staff coming in?
I just have one more comment. I would just like to say that Commissioner Booker didn't, this has been on the agenda since last Wednesday. Commissioner Booker did not, never notified me formally that he wasn't going to be at this meeting. I heard it last night from you and from Commissioner Marshall. And then Mr. Booker sent an email today, or a slight addendum to an email that he sent today notifying us that he would not be here officially. So, you know, he knew this was going to be on the agenda. He could have notified us prior to us putting it on the agenda, which, you know, I would have been comfortable then pulling it off. But I feel like I made a promise to the community last week that this would be on the agenda. We would vote on it. So, but I will go ahead, and if there's any additional commissioner comment, staff comment.
The only thing I'll say before public comment is, I do think there has a, and it's going back, you know, two or three or four sort of ethics investigations. There has been, I think, you know, significant issues procedurally and, and as it relates to what communication has been put out. And I just think, maybe at this time, if it's not over the release of this report, it, it may be a time to reflect upon the Ethics Committee and just determine how effective it really is. I mean, we're, we're sort of going back and forth. It seems like every investigation, and I've only been on the board for 45 days, but it seems like it predates me by years. I mean, Luke, would you agree with that?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's used as a weapon. I mean, I, I think I've said it before, I'll say it again. I wanted to disband it. So once these, once these investigations are closed, however they're resolved, I wanted to disband the Ethics Board. We need to get rid of it. You can go to the State Ethics Committee, and you can deal with them. That's what most other townships do.
And I don't disagree with that at all. But unfortunately, we need to resolve these, there's two, I guess, that are still in front of the board, and, you know, we need to resolve that. So with that, if there's no staff comment, I will go ahead and call for public comment on the, the motion to table.
Dan Sherry, Wayne, who seconded the motion to release the report tonight? I must have missed it. It was motion made by the appointed representative of the 7th Ward. Who seconded it?
Nobody seconded.
Nobody seconded it. Ergo, it's done. There's not even a need for a motion to table. Okay? I got lectured tonight about Robert's Rules of Order from the chair. When there's no second, including none from you, Commissioner Borowski, you don't start waxing on about why you want to have it released tonight. It fails for lack of a second. Okay? Now we do have a motion to table. Presumably, it'll morph into a motion to bring this up in two weeks. That's at least how the commentary sounded from Commissioner Clark. I don't really have an issue with that. I am confused as to why it has taken so long, especially as Commissioner Abel points out, this isn't a situation where you don't know who got the document. Okay? Doug Mccone, who doesn't appear to be here and hasn't been here, last time I saw him at a public meeting, was actually at the Ethics Board hearing involving Commissioner Schaefer, when Martin Heldring stated publicly that everything relating to that preliminary inquiry was confidential. And then Mccone, four days or five days after that, sends in a complaint with Exhibit 6 attached to it. Haven't seen him. He's not here tonight. And as far as I know, hasn't answered any questions publicly as to how he got the document. You're right, Commissioner Abel, it shouldn't have gone this long. That information should have been readily provided. It wasn't being voluntarily provided. Why this township didn't initiate litigation against Doug Mccone and Jim Bowdrey for being in possession of confidential information that they never should have possession of befuddles me. But this has been going on since October. So it's a simple motion to table, right? Unless there's going to be a motion to amend to put it on the next meeting's agenda. There is no second. So as a result, the motion to actually release it tonight cannot go forward procedurally. I hope you understand that, Commissioner Borowski. When there is no second, the motion fails. That's Robert's Rules of Order, period. Okay? Thanks.
Yeah, and all, and, and probably strictly, Dan, you're right. I didn't, what I didn't want was there to be a lack of a second, and it looks like we're just trying to punt this. And, you know, I mean, I want to make sure people know that we're going to address it, and there's a reason.
Yeah, I didn't, I, in case it ever came across that way, there was nothing in your comments, Commissioner Clark, that indicated that you want this swept under the rock in terms of it. You've spoken about this. Other people have spoken about this. And the commentary between you and Commissioner Marshall regarding the Ethics Board is a good one. The Ethics Board, I don't really know about weaponizing, but the way they have conducted themselves in the past several investigations leaves a lot to be desired. By the way, talked earlier tonight about vacancies. You still have, I believe, a vacancy on that Ethics Board. You did not reappoint Lane Vines, nor anybody in his stead for the Ethics Board. And I would, as I stated a couple of meetings ago, I'd be very cautious to put anybody on that Ethics Board who has previously served in past investigations, given how, in my opinion, horrendously the Ethics Board has performed with those investigations. So while this has gone on far too long, given how easy it is to interview somebody either voluntarily or under the sword of litigation, as it's sometimes known as, in a deposition, and I think it would probably take more than, no more than 15 minutes to depose Doug Mccone under oath to find out how he got that document. I don't see how two more weeks of Commissioner Booker, who has been the recipient of this confidential information being used against him, I would like to make a statement to kind of proactively address it. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Martin.
Hi, Kelly Martin, 7th Ward. And I just wanted to say, because I said earlier how much I was looking forward to seeing it, that I completely agree with waiting the 14 days, as you've all agreed to do. I think that that's great, because I think Commissioner Booker should be able to be here for that. And also, because you mentioned disbanding the Ethics Board, is, is it like in the bylaws that you have to close these two investigations before you disband it? They can't just be ended for the lack of, we don't even have a full Ethics Board?
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding, is they have to be wrapped up.
And, and just for clarity, we do have a full Ethics Board. That one seat, they can operate, correct, John? Yes, they can operate without that one seat being filled.
Okay. I didn't realize that, but I think that you guys are making a great decision tonight on, on waiting the two weeks. Thanks.
Thank you.
And one, one other clarification. John, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could move forward with some of the ideas discussed tonight on the future of the Ethics Board if both complaints were withdrawn by, okay?
Right. I mean, the business, the two matters that are in front of them have to be completed. The Ethics Board was created by ordinance. You can uncreate it by ordinance. And I know you, that's been discussed over the last couple of months. So you would have to.
So you would have to introduce an ordinance basically to...
Repeal, right? Repeal that part of Chapter 39.
The original ordinance, right. The original ordinance which created it. It's not part of the Charter. It's not required under the Charter. It's a separate standalone ordinance in the Administrative Code.
All right, let's call the vote.
All right. I will call the vote on the motion to table the release of the report on the Mccone ethics complaint. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Motion passes three to two. Okay, now on to Public Works in Engineering, Ordinance 2018-01, the introduction of an ordinance of Radnor Township, do I need to read the whole thing? Radnor Township Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending Chapter 235 sewers by creating a new Article 6 adoption of the Philadelphia Water Department sewer and wastewater control regulations as amended January 1, 2013, for that portion of the sanitary sewer system of Radnor Township which flows into Lower Marion Township. Mr. Nercini.
Well, here, let me move it so that we can discuss it. I'll move for the passage, or I'll move for the introduction of Ordinance 2018-01. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, Steve, you're on.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is pretty standard fare. A portion of our, as you had noted, a portion of Radnor Township sewage flows through Lower Marion, which ends up at the Philadelphia Treatment Plant. And anybody who has flows to any treatment plant really falls under their rules and regulations. So attached to my memo to the board was the actual Philadelphia Water Department wastewater control regulations. And right behind that is the ordinance Solicitor Rice drew up for us to comply with that. So this is, like I say, pretty standard fare for any wastewater treatment plant that you are tributary to, that you must follow their rules and regulations. And that's what this would do. This is introduction only. If so moves the board, it would be back in front of you at a subsequent meeting for final and hopeful passing.
Okay. Do we have any Commissioner questions with regards to this?
I read it over, it seemed fairly straightforward to me.
I just had a quick question, one quick question. Is the township responsible for the monitoring? Does that fall on us or who does that fall upon?
So you get, certain entities have wastewater permits, industrial wastewater permits, and they are required to do monitoring and they submit that. So a homeowner does not, we don't monitor a homeowner's sanitary sewer, but we are do, we do meter our flows in our lines and actually Lower Marion has meters where our flow goes into their township. So we meter that flow and industrial wastewater permatees also have to monitor their flows to conform to this PWD document and the list of chemicals and compounds in the back of that.
Then who's responsible for the fines? Are we responsible or do we track down whoever the offenders are?
It all comes through the Department of Environmental Protection.
Township wouldn't be responsible.
No, the permatee, the DEP deals with the permatee for enforcement.
Okay. All right. Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. So motion to approve Ordinance 2018-01, or no, the introduction?
Yeah, to introduce it.
Yeah, to introduce it. I'm not going to, do I need to read the whole? I'm not going to read the whole thing. Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing.
Four.
Oh, oh, sorry. I didn't see Matt left, I'm sorry. Okay, next, Item D, NHLS Stadium Station 18-008, requesting a waiver from Ordinance 245 Stormwater Requirements.
And I'm going to recuse myself on this one for two reasons. My wife is corporate counsel for SEPTA and my law firm represents SEPTA on some land development matters, so I'm recusing.
Okay, all right. So can I get a motion? Oh, do we need a motion? So we're just requesting a waiver?
Yes, you do.
Yes. So can I get a motion to approve the NHLS Stadium Station 1801 waiver approval from stormwater requirements?
All right, I'll offer a motion on NHLS Stadium Station Number 18-008, requesting a waiver from Section 245 Stormwater Requirements.
Can I get a second? No second with regards to the waiver on the stormwater requirements.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So the SEPTA team is here, that's that row over there. Very briefly, SEPTA's upgrading the R-100 Stadium Station. And in essence, they're making it ADA compliant. They're expanding the platform to allow two cars to load and unload. And they are here before you tonight requesting a waiver from stormwater management requirements due to the, how small the site is. So basically, they're working within the SEPTA's right of way. I'll let the team present or answer any questions on their own behalf and we are also, staff can opine at one point if you wish.
Okay, do you have anything you want to say or just here to respond to questions or just respond to questions? Okay. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions? The motion on the floor.
Steve, so I guess I'd look to you off the bat. What are your thoughts on this?
So they're expanding the impervious footprint considerably. So this part of it goes back to our stormwater management ordinance which does not provide any credit for existing impervious. So if you look at it, the new impervious, so when they improve something that's there, the new impervious has to be calculated in the stormwater management requirements. So they're, you know, they're going from, and I don't have actual numbers, I'll say 2,000 square feet to around 6,000 square feet in new impervious. And what they're putting, oh, thank you, Mr. Phillips, 6,157 square feet. So what they're saying is we have to work in this right of way. We don't have the ability, the room, to do stormwater management for rate control and volume control because they're limited to that right of way. What I would tell you, what I would tell the board, so no rail entity would want to introduce stormwater against their embankment, their cut or their fill. So, you know, you can picture, it would be very precarious for them to install stone and pipe at the toe of slope of their embankment or in their embankment. You know, that could be a real problem. If you remember what happened to Garrett Hill a few years ago, this was a different situation, but that whole embankment slid, the R-100, they did a lot of work there to fix that. So they are before you tonight requesting a waiver because they basically have no ground, truly no land to do this on. I understand the request and so the Stadium Station improvements are really all about ADA. So some of the reason that there's such an increase in impervious is the huge switchback they're going to have to do, like you see at other rail stations, to accommodate the ADA folks. They're making the platform bigger so they can load and unload two cars at once instead of another car, so they're giving the, try to give the riders a little more efficient service. If I'm saying anything wrong, SEPTA folks, chime in. So from that standpoint, from an engineering standpoint, I understand that, why they would not wish to try to do this. They don't have the room and they wouldn't want to endanger or jeopardize their facility for that. That being said, I think if the board wishes to move through with it, we could request from SEPTA to do something to help from stormwater management. And again, it wouldn't be rate control, it wouldn't be volume control. It could be some type of rain garden to at least help us with water quality with the runoff that comes off the tracks. And it wouldn't be intrusive in that, you know, they're not digging down X feet to do that. But just so the board understands, there is a substantial increase in impervious surface and they're requesting that they do not follow our stormwater management ordinance due to space restrictions.
So I, you know, I understand that and I, you know, I appreciate the efforts, you know, around the ADA compliance. I think that's very important. I guess I'm concerned about the residents who live along, on the other side of that and if there is no stormwater management and there is significant runoff that isn't being addressed, where does, where will that go? Where will that runoff, do we know where that runoff's going to go?
So the south side would go, I guess, onto the Villanova, the dorms there. The north side, and correct me if I'm wrong, would go towards the parking garage, the parking facility that Villanova just put up. So 3,000 square feet is, sounds like a lot, but in the scheme of what's occurring at Villanova, it's actually not a huge amount of impervious. But it is, we do have to think of our residents. There is an inlet on Eithon Avenue and perhaps SEPTA could, again, they're not going to be able to necessarily manage stormwater, but perhaps they can capture and send the south side, which is the, so to speak, our resident side, other than Villanova. Perhaps they could convey stormwater to that inlet. I don't know if that's something you folks could look to, to do.
Steve, one of the issues, if I may, Madam President, we have to watch where the water goes because we don't want to add any additional water into Conestoga Village. That's one area that we don't want to divert any water to. That's one that we've been trying to control. With the development there of the parking garage and that, we want to make sure that one of the goals were to try to limit and improve the water runoff into that area because there have been issues there. So I think, I know I'm speaking with Steve here, we would definitely not want to add any type of stormwater management that may send water in that direction, which would be to the south and to the east. So any type of water, sending any direction of water, that would be a definite no. So I know that's a tight space there, so that would be one of the concerns. We don't want to add anything to that particular area.
So, I just wanted, so, how you guys doing? My name is Taran Booker, the manager of civil engineering for SEPTA. Okay, I'm sorry. How you guys doing tonight? Thank you for having us. My name is Taran Booker, the manager of civil engineering for SEPTA. Just want to take a couple steps back, just to get everybody kind of overview of kind of where we are and kind of how we got here today. So for the most part, so SEPTA in general, so we have what we call the Sustainability Plan. So we have a 25 acre plan, so over five years that we're, look, we take a high regard for stormwater management. But the key thing for stormwater management is that you got to make sure that you implement these features in the correct places. So one of the key things that we've been doing is that, so for this project, we met with actually Mr. Phillips back in 2016. What happened with this project was that in between 2016 and I guess a couple of months ago, we were looking to go to construction, the township changed their stormwater ordinance a bit on us. So while before, we didn't have to do stormwater management for what was regarded for our improvements project, when we had a fellow be with Mr. Phillips, we realized that the change in stormwater ordinance actually triggered SEPTA to now need stormwater management. That's why we're here before you today. So what happened was when we did our soil testing, when we did our site survey and type of investigations, we didn't include any stormwater management together, period. So we didn't have any stormwater plans to do any kind of stormwater improvements. This, that's in the forefront. The key thing that we had to keep in mind is, as, Steve Nercini pointed out earlier, that the size constraints for this parcel of land. So on the outbound side, which is the site nearest to Villanova, we actually are entering to agreeing with Villanova due to the close nature of our properties. We're literally building right against their fire access lane on the outbound side. On the inbound side, we have a easement. So it looks like it's land over there. We have an easement with Pico for overhead maintenance and that needs to have an access way at all times. So literally, SEPTA, we really don't have any space to put any kind of proposed features in this area. I mean, SEPTA won't be opposed to doing trade-offs, but we really don't want to get into putting something in that's going to fail. If you look at any of our facilities, any product that we've done over the years, storm management is actually a big attribute for us and something that we always look to make sure we implement. What we don't want to do is put it out there just to make sure that we meet the requirement if we know it's going to be hard for us to keep up with it. I don't know where we will put something that will work for this facility. Because of the grain as well, you're going to make sure everything drains to your proposed facility. The grades are this, our whole site is up, you know, roughly nine, I would say, multiple feet in air. So you, just trying to grab all the stormwater itself was going to be tough. So for that nature, that's the reason why we're kind of asking for the waiver. So I want to make sure that you understand, the Commission knows that we're not looking to, you know, bypass the rules and regulations at all. SEPTA takes storm management very, very seriously, but we're asking for, you know, your understanding and where we stand today. We don't, we really would love not to get into the inlet along Eithon Avenue. If you wanted to do some landscaping credits or something that we can, you know, do something above ground, maybe within our right of way up top on the outbound side, the site going nearest to, into the city, we might consider what we can do on that side. But it really gets, it starts to get tough when we actually using our taxpayer dollars to actually make improvements along the inlet that really our stormwater doesn't flow into. So I just wanted to make sure that we kind of pretty clear on that. We definitely don't mind seeing what we can do on, maybe on the inbound side, but then again, like as Steve said earlier, it wouldn't be the true nature of a rain garden because we don't want to dig that close to our right of way at the same time. But we definitely can do some landscaping improvements, you know, which in itself can kind of offset the increase in impervious area that we have flows today.
I got a couple of questions. And I'm, again, all for ADA and making things compliant and it is a university and you have all kinds of people that go there with different disabilities. I guess my fear is you're going to be basically making Aldwin Lane like a through street at this point where there's going to be a ton of traffic on there. Aldwin Lane is pretty much sandwiched in between trolley tracks, this monstrous CICD project, and the only real permeable area that I would, I see is that triangle. And then depending on what your construction would be, what do you say, 12 to 6, is it? Pardon? It's a wrong station? Okay. Okay, it's the other one? Okay. All right.
Eric, do you think it would be possible to not only do some plantings, but perhaps convey some via pipe to that inlet on Eithon Avenue, maybe a combination of the two? Capture and convey some to the inlet, you know, maybe you work to a certain storm and then also do the landscaping. So it still wouldn't be full stormwater management, but it would be something to maybe reduce the, maybe we look at the new impervious and try to capture one storm that you could convey, now you have to take a look at the inlet and the pipe and whatever. Villanova also charges, discharges to this inlet through all their systems, but maybe that's something SEPTA could look at to try to round this out.
Could they tie into what Villanova's already doing? Or no?
On the south side, there's really nothing. So you have the dorm project, which has considerable stormwater management, it's massive, and that actually eventually ends up, the discharge from those on Eithon Avenue. On the south side, if you look at the little map, I forget the name of the dorms, really they just back up, the south side of the tracks is adjacent to Villanova's property. So there is an inlet there. There might be something they could do, like I say, between plantings and conveyance of some specific storm towards our ordinance. Maybe you could do something like that so that, and let's maybe work on the new impervious because it, what is there is there and there is no stormwater management. So maybe we try to manage some of the new impervious.
Steve, does it make sense for you to work with SEPTA and come up with a plan and then bring this back before the board at a later meeting?
You could do that, sir. It's the board's call. So from a stormwater management standpoint, any waiver has to go to the board. Staff would gladly work with SEPTA. I know they're anxious to get rolling, so my request would be, could we, if that's the, please, so pleases the board, if we could have them back at our next meeting, which is the 26th, 12th, or yeah, if we could have them back, today's the 20th. If we could have them back at the first meeting in March, I think their team and us, we could work on something and present that to you.
So I agree with Commissioner, I would feel more comfortable knowing there is a plan before I say there is, you can have a waiver. You know, I think if we can work together to figure that out, you know, I'm concerned about the residents, I'm concerned about, you know, where this water may go, you know, to Bob's point around Conestoga Village and whatnot. So if that's possible, Steve, can you guys work together? And then if, in that case, then I think what we should do is make a motion to table this and we can put it on the agenda for the meeting on the 12th.
We'll gladly put this on the front burner and get this done with SEPTA. Work on something that's, I think, meets their needs and meets our community's needs.
Is that agreeable to?
Yeah, Stephen, I'd also like to see some calculations. I mean, what do we have? I mean, what do we have? What's existing conditions? What's the ultimate, you know, what would be the best solution and what's their sort of, you know?
What we'll do is actually the next packet, I'll put the grading permit in application, which actually shows the net increase in impervious. Again, I think we need to, so this is one of the issues with our ordinance in that there is, you're, you're doing the stormwater management for what is existing, which isn't a bad thing, but it really does increase the size of the project. Like I said, I think we could work with SEPTA to a specific storm, a two-year, five-year, one-hour event, something like that, and they'll show their calculations of what they're able to do to manage and/or convey that storm.
I think that's good. So, so we have a motion to approve the waiver. I think in, we, what we need to do is have a motion to table this. Oh, public comment? I'm sorry. Go ahead. Oh, there is any additional staff comment? I'm sorry. No? Okay. Go ahead, Gene. I'm sorry.
Hi, Jane Gally, Conestoga Village. I am the, I can tell you that since I've walked the property along that station, there is a kind of a dry gully there, so if it rains, the water that's, it's going to go down along the tracks and then curl around behind the Villanova dormitories, in which case it ends up in the backyards of people that live and their basements on Brookly and that little corner of Fairfax. This is, this is, I, I'm, it sounds like a small amount of adding pervious, impervious property, but the people along that road will take the brunt of it. And they've taken the brunt of what's being built, plus if this is going to go on, then this, this needs to be addressed in a very specific way to get the water. And the fact that it's, it's graded, it goes right to those people. I mean, the, if you walk that property and you, you would shoot a line, it's heading straight for those houses, and there's nothing there to stop it. So I would think long and hard and figure out a way to get this water not going east. Go, get it going the other way. That's just from my point.
Okay, thank you, Jane.
Hi, Anna Marie Hessman, resident of Old Oaks, and a big fan of public transit over my lifelong rider of the R-100. It was my first, although the Garrett Hill stop was where I first discovered it. I'm also a strong advocate of ADA compliance and disability inclusion. So I haven't had a chance to look at the maps. I don't know if they were in the meeting packet. I just didn't get a chance. But I hope that whatever plan they have is not, is better from a functional perspective than what I see at the Rosemont Railroad Station, which I know is probably ADA compliant, but it's completely impractical for a person who arrives in a vehicle who can barely walk to park their vehicle and then get to and from the platforms. So I hope it's actually a practical, real plan from a disability inclusion perspective because I'm really gunning for SEPTA to do better with that. I don't know if SEPTA is aware of exactly, like if they, if they're familiar with the history of Valley Run and how it was bricked over or paved over at the main lot. Did you guys look at the historical maps when you were planning all this at all? Do you know? Okay, so their Valley Run is that inlet that is on the north and south side of North Eithan, just at the south side of the overpass, the Norris Town High Speed Line overpass, that is the remnants of Valley Run, which is a stream that goes through Conestoga Village, which was also paved over in lots of places. And that's kind of the source of the stormwater management problems right there. Just this past week, when we had a lot of rain, trying to walk down that sidewalk next to the dorms, which are slightly downstream of this whole project, giant puddles on the sidewalk. You know, you either have to walk through the puddles on the embankment, et cetera, and this is directly a result of the unmanaged water at that point. And as Jane rightly said, Conestoga Village, especially on Brookly and some of those properties that are just adjacent to the back of those dorms have had chronic water problems that are a result of this. And if you kind of take a walk behind the dorms, you see kind of like a little swampy area. I don't know if it's officially a rain garden, but like the remnants of the history of this thing are all throughout there. And so I hope that whatever you decide will do much better than the history. I hope that you find another way than doing a waiver. I hope that with partnership with Villanova, which has all this knowledge about stormwater, they're looking for projects, I'd love to see more pedestrian stuff along the tracks there. John Fisher was trying, and I wanted to mention this project, but there wasn't public comment after the Seventh Ward stuff. I don't know exactly what the, where he got bogged down when he was advocating for like a pedestrian walkway along the R-100, but rather than just beautifying, doing rain garden work and finding a walking path that's not right next to traffic that's going 45 miles an hour, one foot away from you, I think would be a really desirable improvement for the Seventh Ward residents, for the students, all of that. So I ask SEPTA to think a lot about that and maybe if, you know, the people who are actually, actually have Villanova's ear from an engineering and budget perspective, to think about making this more of a synergistic process. Thank you.
And Commissioner, we'll make sure that what SEPTA comes back with is in the best interest of the community and serves their needs also.
Okay.
Sarah Pillling, 29 Garrett Avenue. I believe what Anna Marie was talking about was what had affected Rick Yulo's property. And I've been there when a stream that should be two feet wide was 15 feet wide on Fairfax, and then going through a cut that the township created, which made the water move much faster. So that's the first thing. There's a lot of water that goes through there. The second thing is, as much as Anna Marie thinks a path would be fine from Villanova to Garrett Hill, that is something that the Garrett Hill residents have absolutely not wanted because frankly, it gives a faster, non-policed way for Villanova students to get to the bars in Garrett Hill. We have enough of that, thank you. We don't need anymore. So I, I understand that SEPTA's got this problem with space, but the effect in our neighborhood when it's not a really heavy rain, that a stream will go from two and a half to three feet to 15 feet in about 10 minutes. And I know when Rick Yulo lived here, he had little boys, and he had to lock the doors to keep the boys in the house because he was afraid of them being swept away and drowned. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any additional public comment? Good evening.
Hi, Rick Leonardi, Aldwin Lane. Just three fast requests. The plans that SEPTA's provided in the packet are unreadable, at least on the online version. So between now and the next appearance, I'd like to see better plans so we actually know what we're talking about here. I think that would be, you know, that, that's my, my first request on that. And I can't remember the other two, so thanks very much.
I think we did talk about better plans or that had been brought up.
We'll, we'll make sure the grading permit application is in a full-size, not an eight and a half by 11, but a full-size set from SEPTA. So you have the SEPTA packet. Like I say, we're, we're going to represent the township in the best interest of the commissioners and our residents, and we'll work with SEPTA to have something that's acceptable and provide as much information for our residents and the board and staff to make an informed decision.
Then should we go ahead and withdraw procedurally? What, we, so there's a motion on the table for the waiver? Do we need to withdraw that, or should we go ahead and do a motion to table?
I would still table. You're going to bring this back, Steve, right? Yes, Madam Chair, if you could please just, I think, table it till next meeting, and we'll have it on the agenda, and if SEPTA can get their stuff together quick enough after a meeting with us, we'll be ready.
All right, so can I get a motion to table? NHLS Stadium Station 18008 requesting a waiver from stormwater requirements?
Yep, I'll, I'll offer the motion on number 18-008, requesting a waiver from Section 245 on stormwater requirements. Motion to table, sorry.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, oh, okay. Commissioner comment on the motion to table? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and call the vote on the motion to table. NHLS Stadium Station 18008 requesting waiver from stormwater requirements. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes four to nothing with one abstention. All right, so SEPTA, we'll see you back here on March 12th, and thank you for working with Mr. Norsini to come up with a plan that will work for our residents. So thank you very much. Okay, so next we have item E, Resolution 201831, approving the waiver of land development of Walker Family Properties LLP for the property located at 372 West Lancaster Avenue, waiver of land development. Good evening.
Evening. Nick Caniglia representing.
All right, Nick, let me see if there's support here. I'll move for the passage of Resolution 2018-31, approving the waiver of land development of Walker Family Properties LLP for the property located at 372 West Lancaster Avenue. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion on the table, Commissioner, or go right ahead, and then we'll have Commissioner comment.
Okay, just to bring you updated on where we left off last meeting two weeks ago. Since that time, the board requested that Dr. Walker notify neighbors, so in fact, we sent out notices to 249 neighbors, which is what is required by the land development ordinance. I believe it's either 500 or 1,000 feet from the property lines. And so all those notices were sent out in accordance with the land development ordinance. Dr. Walker also went and spoke to the immediate neighbors and actually had a petition signed by probably all those neighbors in support of this application. You'll recall that the site is a current restaurant site as far as everyone can remember. It was always a restaurant site. It was a Denny's, it was a Kenny Rogers, it was a Thai restaurant, and most recently Caramel Cafe. It is approximately a block or two from the western end of the township, so this is part of the Radnor Gateway as you're coming into the township. And anyone who's familiar with that building is, it's a very ugly building. And so it's been replaced by this three-story brick building that you see on the screen in front of you. Dr. Walker's been practicing in Radnor for the last 18 years. He estimates that approximately 5,000 of his patients are Radnor residents. He, due to the growth of his practice, he was forced to sell his former location at 427 East Lancaster, and in order to pay for this site, had to sell it and settle basically on the same day, so it cut down any ability he had to kind of get a head start on this whole project. Currently, he's in temporary trailers on the site. He has many elderly patients. It is handicap accessible, but it's a very long walk for his patients. Several of them have already told him that it's an issue with them, they are elderly, and it's a long walk because of the long ramp going up to the, to the entrance of the site. The only change to the site is demolition of the existing building, construction of this building, everything else remains the same on the site. The only thing we're really seeking to do here is to expedite the process. Dr. Walker still has to go through the standard requirements for land development. That is, he still has to go to the Design Review Board to have this application reviewed and approved, the actual structure. He needs to get a grading permit. Part of that grading permit process, as you heard earlier this evening, will involve stormwater management, since he is removing impervious and replacing it with new impervious, although the total site will have less impervious than is currently on the site because the actual footprint of this building is less than the footprint of the prior building. He also will have to comply with all building codes, and even though this building is, is in compliance with all zoning requirements during the building permit application, the grading permit application, the township will review to make certain that it is in conformity with all the township ordinance as well. If approved, he still have to comply with the stormwater management ordinance. He still would have to submit a site plan to be reviewed by the township for compliance. He will have to get approvals from all other governmental agencies. He will have to pay the rec fee, that is a requirement of the land development ordinance. He will have to provide to the township and sign a development agreement for the improvements. And as I previously mentioned, he'll still have to comply with all township ordinance regarding sewage, stormwater grading, zoning, building codes, and things of that nature. As I said, the real reason for this is to expedite his ability to move into this building. He's hoping if we can get approval here this evening, that by December, you know, we would, we would have this building built. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, and Nick, you may have said this. You reached out to the neighbors, they were aware that this taller building's going in?
Yes.
I mean, I think it looks good, it's just it's two floors obviously taller. That's the only concern. So if they know, and I haven't, I haven't heard of any objections yet, so.
And Nick, no setback issues with Donahue Funeral Home next door or?
Yeah, actually, good point, because currently it's not conforming with the setback with Donahue Funeral Home. This building actually is in compliance with the setback requirement. Currently, I believe it's about 10 feet from the Donahue Funeral Home setback. This building will conform the zoning code of a 20-foot setback.
Nick, so this building isn't just two floors taller than what's there. It's the tallest building out of, in that whole corridor of buildings, correct?
Well, you have the buildings across Stratford Avenue there, the condominiums. And those condominiums, I know, are three stories as well. So if you go across, you have enterprise leasing, and right behind enterprise leasing are those condominiums.
Yeah, but not along, not along Lancaster Avenue.
Not that I recall along Lancaster Avenue. I know further down the street on the left-hand side, I believe there are some three-story office buildings that aren't brick, kind of across from, I don't want to say it's across from Anales, I think it's a little further up from Anales, maybe across from the Seafood Place.
Okay. So I was at the facility last week, I'm a patient at the practice, and I went in, I mean, to me, the ramp there seems sufficient, parking sufficient, you can park right back there, walk right up the ramp. My question is, so you're going through a construction phase, how do you operate at that facility? Because all the construction trucks will have to go in the one entrance. Where are you putting the materials? And how do, how are you expecting elderly to navigate the construction, get back there? I mean, that would be my concern as you're going through that construction project.
I know that's been looked at, and I would have to turn.
We're talking township, the engineering.
Rocket, why don't you come up? You have to.
My name's Rock Walker. We've, we've been speaking with the township for probably about nine months about that, and we're, the front half, we're coming off Lancaster Avenue, that's where all the construction will be. And I've talked to Donahue Funeral Home, and we'll probably be taking patients in the back. So we'll actually split the property in two.
So where will the patients enter your facility?
They'll have to come through Donahue.
And do they have access from Donahue into the back parking lot by the trailers?
Yes.
So the trailers will still operate throughout the construction project?
Correct, correct. We're going to split it in half. That's how, that's why we put them there.
Okay.
And did that with the township.
And where, where would the materials go during the construction phase?
They're going to go on the front half.
So any, how close to the, how close to Lancaster Avenue and the sidewalks?
I, I don't think I can give you a good answer on that.
I, I obviously couldn't block the sidewalks, and I think they may have to comply with the setback. It may have to be at least 20-foot setback, which is what this building currently would be.
So half acre.
I would guess you'd probably have to fence that construction site. You'd have to make clear signage to your patients going back towards Donahue to access the trailers, correct? Yeah, I, I mean, this came up last meeting, and I just think, you know, here we have a public health accommodation, particularly for some of the elderly residents, and I just think if we're going to make an exception anywhere, this seems to be one of those rare exceptions where it helps the community, it gets a building that, you know, arguably, whether you think it's aesthetically nicer than the ones that's there or not, I mean, I'm not sure that's really material, but you're helping facilitate a process that could otherwise take, you know, nine to 12 months longer, and hopefully we'd have the same outcome. I don't, you know, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming down on. I don't, you know, that's kind of where I'm coming down on.
One more question. Will you occupy the three floors, or are you leasing office space out?
There's a possibility that part of it would be leased. But we're intending it to be kind of a medical-type facility.
So, have you identified any potential leases?
No, they haven't. No, I don't believe so. No.
That was actually my question about, so how many square feet is the building going to be?
15,000.
That's about, well, I, right. Gross.
So, it's 15,000, okay. And then approximately, and you don't know how much you'll be, how much you'll be occupying?
Well, I might be somewhere around 5,000 square feet.
Okay. So, I guess we're making, I think this could set a bad precedent that we're making a special exception for you want a third of the building when it's going to be more of a rental than anything else. So, that's kind of my concern if, you know, and I think it's great to have doctors' offices in the area and everything, but I look at this more of a landlord issue than a hardship for your business. Just comment on that.
My business is there. So, it is a hardship for my business. The fact that I'm making the building three stories, I couldn't afford this property if I didn't do that. It wouldn't be worth it. So, my business needs to be somewhere. This is the location. I understand what you're saying, but it is a hardship for my patients. I had a patient the other day, I talked about the ramp. She walked up the steps. She's on oxygen, and she walked up because she said the ramp was too long. It's ADA. I'm complying with it. I get complaints quite a bit. I'm going to be doing everything that needs to be done if I went through the land development process. So, the only thing you're doing is saving me time, and I would appreciate that. It would help me out a lot and help a lot of patients in the area.
And you said you signed a petition?
I have a petition signed by the neighbors. They all loved it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and that was your request last time?
Yeah.
So, I went and talked to them.
So, my only question is, and again, I think it's a beautiful building. It's certainly a much, a huge improvement to what's there right now. You know, my concern is that, I have a concern about the parking. And now, during construction, are you going to have residents be parking in the funeral home lot? And what if there's a funeral there? And also, if you're going to be leasing out the rest of the space to more medical, I'm learning through this process.
I have to meet all requirements on the parking, which I will. And the one reason I bought this building is because it has so much parking. So, I have plenty of parking for myself in this transition. That's not an issue.
Okay. And the township has said that that's, can you weigh in?
That's correct. From what we've seen so far, what they submitted with this plan, it meets parking now. And before we issue the grading permits or any of the necessary building permits, they would have to prove once again that they meet the parking requirements.
So, you'd have another opportunity to take a look at that.
Absolutely. There's a whole permitting process they're subject to. There'll be no difference, from my standpoint, there'll be no difference whether this goes through land development or doesn't. It's the same engineering review, meeting the same standards. It just condenses the process.
And are those standards, and just because I'm learning, and I apologize, so are those standards, so right now, we know you'll be occupying about 5,000 square feet for your medical practice. Are those standards looking at it if the rest is occupied as medical, which we know is more intensive? So, that's what we're looking at?
Absolutely. They have to meet the code for the size of the building they're going to construct. So, they would have to prove that they have sufficient parking for the three-story, roughly 15,000-square-foot building, which currently on the plan, they show, and it shows it conforms. But before they're issued any permits, we would certainly confirm that.
That's actually the rate-limiting factor on the size of the building, parking.
And for the use? So, the use in addition to the size?
Yeah, the use.
It's one and the same in the review process.
Parking's based on the square footage and the type of use.
Nick, what is the zoning district here? What do we?
It's C1 or C2?
C1?
Maybe C2. I believe it's C2.
Okay.
Which the use is permitted. There's, as Roger said, this is totally compliant with all township ordinances, you know, parking. And even when some parking will be removed during construction, the temporary trailers will still have to comply with the parking requirement. They still will have to show that there's sufficient parking to comply with code for the use of the temporary trailers.
Okay, so just one other thought here. You know, obviously, you've heard some concerns about, you know, setting precedent here, and I share those to some degree. But would the applicant be prepared to come back? You know, we're not going to ask you to come back every month, but maybe every three months. Give us sort of an update on the project, how it's progressing. We can have Roger and Kevin sort of give us a, you know, an assessment at that time because it does feel fairly lenient for us to go ahead and grant a waiver and then not have any way to sort of, you know, just check a box three months from now to see how that project is going.
We would have no issue with that.
Is that fair?
So, we could go ahead and put together maybe a schedule to see when that could happen so we can check in?
Sure, whatever you'd like. Because the township will be inspecting some of the public improvements as they're constructed. So, it's not like we give them permits and off they go, and we don't see them again. I mean, the township building inspectors and the stormwater system that they install will be inspected to make sure it goes in in accordance with the requirements.
I don't think these are going to be long presentations. I think they're just milestones and just make sure they're meeting all the code and the permitting process while the building's going up. That would be, I think, every two or three months, you know, max. It doesn't have to be any more than that.
Okay. All right, are there any other commissioner comments? Okay. Any staff comment?
Yes, Madam President?
Oh, yes.
One is, I'd like to thank Dr. Walker for bringing this forward. No offense to your current property, but it is blighted properly, and I saw it to the township. And this will be a welcomed addition to the community here to take a property and turn it around. I know the board's concern is, you know, short-cutting this in a way, but I think this would be a precedent for the board if there is one. It's not precedent-setting, but one where you do have properties like this, and also is that wonderful McDonald's that sits there also on Lancaster that is in the process of being looked at, redeveloped, that these would be ones to fast-track to, especially when we look at gateways into the community. This is one that looks to fit that bill. So, I think this is a criteria that the board can look at of trying to, what fits that criteria to try to move within these timeframes that at least someone can follow along that process of what meets it and what doesn't meet it, to give the board a comfort level of how you would look to review these and what would fit these. So, again, I want to thank the doctor for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is there any public comment? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. So, all those in favor of the motion on the floor to approve Resolution 201831 approving the waiver of land development of Walker Family Properties for the property located at 372 West Lancaster Avenue, waiver of land development, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Good night. Okay, on to SALDO Application 2017-S-09, 230 Ashwood Road. And this is for caucus, minor final subdivision plan.
Yes, so no vote or anything, just getting information and giving feedback if there is.
Okay. I don't know, Roger, can you introduce this over to me, Steve, or?
Sure, I can give you the basics here. This is purely a lot-line change where adjacent parcels are just redoing a couple of lot-lines to transfer some of the property from one parcel to the other because I believe there is a driveway that crosses across one property to get to the other property. So, they're kind of straightening that out. The applicant can take you quickly through the plan here so that you can fully understand it.
Welcome, gentlemen.
All right, good evening. My name's Matthew Bush from JMR Engineering here representing the applicant Keith Hack. As Roger said, we're subdividing, we have a lot-line change in our two zoning district to kind of correct a couple issues that were going on with this between these two parcels. In the front of the property, we're conveying two parcels of land from 230 Ashwood Road to 317 Hildale Road. I'm sorry. The first issue is in the front of the property, I guess, not really the intersection of Hildale and Ashwood where Keith's driveway comes out. Currently, it encroaches onto the property at Ashwood Road. So, this lot-line change would allow his driveway to not encroach onto the neighbor's property any longer. In addition, a parcel of land, noted as parcel B on the plan, kind of along the north property boundary is also being conveyed to the Hildale Road property in order to kind of convey. There's a playground area and a fence that will be, that is currently encroaching onto the neighbor's property that will, that issue will be fixed as well. There's, the existing lot at Hildale Road is, has a few non-conformities. This plan isn't increasing those at all. It's actually helping the non-conformities. Those are, the side yard setback is actually being increased because we're conveying that additional parcel of land. The impervious coverage is also being helped out on Hildale Road because we're increasing the size of that property. And the third one is the lot area for the Hildale Road property is also being increased. Currently, it's about 0.4 acres, and it's going up to about a half an acre. So, these will still all be non-conformities, but we're helping that situation by doing this lot-line change.
I would note also that there are no improvements proposed with this plan. It's purely a lot-line change.
I was going to say, this seems pretty straightforward. I mean, I don't really think there's much to do here in terms of feedback or anything. So, I mean, do you all have any, any feedback or comments?
Just your application here is just a lot-line change. We're not, are we, we're not doing a subdivision, right? This is just?
Technically, the way your code is written, it needs to be a subdivision.
It does.
It's kind of like a re-subdivision, but that's all it is, is purely a lot-line change. If this was one owner that owned this parcel, we would do this administratively, and it wouldn't even come before this board. I would handle that administratively, so.
Okay, just, you know, as it relates to this plan, though, Roger, if it were to be developed in the future, are there any issues related to adjacency or any kind of setback issues?
No, they would have to come through the process if they chose to do anything additional on this.
Okay.
Okay, any other commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and call the vote.
Well, there's no vote. Nothing to do.
Oh, there's no vote. It's just caucus.
This will come back with a.
I'm just so used to saying it.
Yeah, this will be back in front of you in two weeks.
Yeah, in two weeks. And is that going to be final?
That'll be final.
That'll be final? All right, good, yeah.
All right, great.
So, we'll see one more time, and it should take about five minutes.
We'll come back at nine o'clock next week.
We'll try to get you on earlier than that.
You're getting our timing down. Good. That's half the battle.
Come on, this is early. Usually, it would be like eleven.
Oh, we're flying through this right.
Okay, next up is public safety ordinance 2018-02, the adoption for the Upper Gulf Road and Oak Grove Lane stop sign.
All right, so I'll move for the adoption of ordinance 2018-02, which is a stop sign at Upper Gulf Road and Oak Grove Lane. Is there a second?
A second.
And we did address this before staff traffic is recommending this. We have introduced it. No changes in the interim, no objections in the interim, as far as I know, so.
Is Oak, excuse, Oak Grove, is that the, I'm just trying to get my bearings here, is that right off of King of Prussia, or how far down is it?
So, if you're on, if you go up Pine Tree Road and make a right on Upper Gulf.
Right.
You hit the stop sign at Arden, and then you go up the hill and down the hill, and as you're coming down the hill, you hit Oak Grove.
That's Oak Grove, okay.
So, yeah, the hope is that it slows people down in between the county line and Arden stop sign.
Got it, okay.
And we are, the police are looking into a traffic signal possibility at Arden Road. That's long-term, and that's a budget item. But is that correct, Chief? Am I right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, is there any additional commissioner comment on this? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call the vote on ordinance 2018-02, the adoption of the Upper Gulf Road and Oak Grove Lane stop sign. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Okay, ordinance 2018-03, the introduction for the 900 block of Glenbrook Avenue time limit parking. May I have a motion for this?
Sure, so I'll move for the introduction of ordinance 2018-03, time limit parking on the 900 block of Glenbrook Avenue. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
And I know we had some public participation earlier that, correct me if I'm wrong, was in support of this, so.
Thank you for allowing us to partner. We're going to have a moment to get.
It's nice, it's nice to have.
Is there any commissioner comment to this? Is there any staff comment? Okay, any additional public comment? Okay, and I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of ordinance, approving ordinance, or the introduction of ordinance 2018-03, 900 block of Glenbrook Avenue, time limit parking, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing.
And just so they know, when do you think this will be back to us at the next meeting?
Yes, sir. It's likely in two weeks, yeah.
Thank you. All right, so they'll be back to us for adoption then? All right, thank you.
At this time, we have nothing for community development, parks and rec, library, or public health. So, is there any old business? Staff? Okay, any new business? Commissioner Abel?
So, I've asked for a discussion on some board training. It's no secret that there's four new members on this board. We've been at this for eight weeks, and I think it would be good. We've had some issues where there's been some questions on open records and what's public and what's private. And I think we would all benefit from some training on the Sunshine Act as well as open records laws. Solicitor Rice, I think, has given this training in the past. The two things that I would like to see is not only that it be available to the Board of Commissioners, I would also like to see it available to all committee boards. And I would like it to be open to the public. So, if there's any residents that want to attend and listen to the training and understand the guidance we're being given, you know, we're all on equal footing in terms of our knowledge of Sunshine Act and open records. And if there's any other types of training that board members think we need.
Would ex parte be included in that? You know, like the ex parte to different, you know, different entities outside the Board of Commissioners, lawyers and stuff like that?
Again, I'm open, whatever training commissioners think that we need, add it to the list.
That'd fall under sunshine, wouldn't it?
Ex parte? I mean, commissioners can talk to anybody you want to talk to outside of the meeting individually. You can't meet in a quorum with somebody, but, you know, whatever property owner, resident, someone looking to open a business in the township, you can do that. I mean, one of the things that maybe to add to this list is, because we had a discussion earlier tonight about development and, you know, what the municipality's planning code requires. I mean, that, I think there's some basic misunderstanding as to what that board has the power to do when you have a land development that comes in front of you. And there's a lot of demands made of that board when that happens. So, I mean, that would be something to add to that. You talked about it earlier.
Yeah, I think the MPC should be added in there to, so that everybody knows what we're dealing with when we get these development plans in and what we can and can't do. You know, we don't have free rein over these things.
I mean, I think the ex parte is, it's a big thing when it comes to who and how commissioners can talk to and what they can talk to because a lot gets lost in translation when you have these committee meetings. And, you know, I mean, I, for one, have sometimes been placed in, not uncomfortable situations, but you're dealing with two different parties, and you're kind of in the middle of it, and your arms are getting pulled on both sides. And I wouldn't want that to happen to any other commissioners as well.
So, is that, though, in the chart? I mean, isn't there, do we add a charter review to this? I mean, isn't some, isn't that part of the charter?
No, I think that would be very good to incorporate it all, then.
I mean, I think I understand what he's saying, but. I mean, I think I understand what he's saying, but I, I did this to be more integrated in the community, so if this is going to exclude me from talking to people, I might resign if that's the case. I didn't do this to be cut off from the community, you know, so.
Yeah, there's no prohibition, you know, and, I mean, I guess it depends on what, what the topic is, but commissioners, you know, you can talk to whoever you want to talk to. If someone calls you up, as long as you're not meeting with a quorum and discussing agency business, whether in person, on phone, by email, I don't think there's any court cases that say that's a Sunshine Act, but we've always said that real-time email or telephone calls with the majority of the board, you know, is problematic. So, but individual or two commissioners talking to, say, a representative of Villanova or a representative of Valley Forge, you know, that's, I think that's what you're supposed to be doing, talking to all the constituents, residents and anybody else that has a stake in the community.
No, I'm aware of that. My, my concern is, you know, if we're going to do it, it should be, it should be grander when it comes to things like the charter, different acts, as well as the Sunshine Act. I mean, if we're going to educate each other, then it should be done in a way where we're all on the same page and we all have the, the same, the same knowledge where it's done, you know, face-to-face, in person, and it's not, you know, and we can go through the textbook because sometimes the textbook that I've read, it's, can be a little bit confusing. So to get everything out there and if you have the public to see it or have other committees to see it, I'm fine with.
John, I sort of remember, I was probably going back 10 years ago when I was on the planning commission, but I think we had like a Saturday morning, you, you gave a tutorial. There were a bunch of us here, we had questions. I mean, that, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really care the date.
Yeah, it was boards and commissions.
The important thing, open everybody.
I think that was mainly boards and commissions and elected officials.
And available to the public.
Anybody who wants to attend.
Do it right here. Public notice it. Do it right here, absolutely.
Also, if I could suggest too, that we would videotape it and those who aren't able to attend, we can send them a link to, on the website, and then also if they want, they can take it. We could put it on flash drive, CD, whatever that media that they would want, that they could pick it up at that particular time too, if that's agreeable with the board.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so do we just need to have a consensus that yes, we'd like to do this? I don't think we have to vote on this or anything.
Well, let's, let's maybe, maybe under, maybe for the next agenda, under, probably under personnel administration, set a, set a...
Well, I think you want to set an agenda.
Educational session for some date.
Right, yeah, right.
All right.
Also, sorry, could we also, I don't know if there's time to do this, but do something real brief with Robert's Rules of Order as well? I don't know if that should be separate or, but I think that is important as well for the commissioners.
We could incorporate that, and then the League of Women Voters. I thought Roberta was going to come and talk about that. The League is doing a thing on Robert's Rules here, and I, I don't have it in front of me. It's in a couple weeks, I think it's March 12.
March 13th.
March 13th, okay.
John, I mean...
So the League will be doing that.
I mean, so how long, what would you think the timeframe would be? Would it be a one, you know, one hour, five hour? I mean, it could be as long as it gets dragged out to, but if you do Robert's Rules and you do, you know, a general sunshine and Home Rule Charter and the Township Charter timeframe, what would you be looking at time-wise to, to get there?
It's dependent on questions. We did a, two of us did a sort of a seminar for some planning commissions last year, two different, not in Radnor, different municipalities, and that was about an hour and a half, just going over the MPC, planning commission's role, what they can and can't do as an advisory body. We also covered Sunshine Act and the open records. I mean, planning commission doesn't get that involved in requests for their records, but we've had, in this township, we've had a lot of boards and commissions have their records requested. I think Melissa handles maybe 400 right to know requests a year, more or less, maybe more. I mean, but there's several hundreds that she handles each year. So she's got a lot of experience. We don't get involved in all of those. You know, some end up getting appealed. But, you know, so we did that. That was about an hour and a half for a small group, you know, with not a whole lot of questions, and I think three of us took a topic and then went through that. So, you know, I think probably you're looking at three hours to get into it, and, you know, I would have myself, probably Peter Nelson, and maybe one of the other municipal solicitors in my office involved in that. But let's get to topics, you know, Sunshine Act, right to know, and at least I think the MPC and how you fit into that, you know, and how development fits into that, I think is a good start.
Makes sense.
Robert's Rules, you know, might be a whole separate seminar by itself.
If the League is doing something, I would encourage everyone to attend what the League is going to do.
Yeah.
I mean, they're going to do something on March 13th, so.
So if we could do it the same, that, I mean, if it's possible to do it at the same time, before, after?
Oh, well, we'll have to look at, we'll have to look at dates, and three hours is a lot to do on a weeknight.
I would just say, just go to the League of Women Voters one. I'm sure plenty of us will be there. If it's insufficient for some reason, we'll have our own.
Okay, so we will go ahead and then put this on the agenda for the next meeting. Maybe by then we can at least have a date where we can, you know, announce and let people know and let our boards and commissions know that we're going to be doing this. So I think it's a fine idea. Thank you, Commissioner Abel, for bringing it forward, so. All right, so I guess that leads us into our last public participation. Do you have any public comment?
Dan Sherry, Wayne. In terms of Sunshine Act, I wish we had some public comment about that. The idea that this board would have potentially John Rice and then, I hear Mr. Nelson, that's also from John Rice's firm, and then maybe another person from John Rice's firm doing a three-hour presentation, that would be nine aggregate attorney hours, that's ridiculous, particularly with John Rice's history in terms of what is confidential and what is not confidential, okay? If you, any of you would like, I will share with you a copy of the Office of Open Records determination where the township was advised by Mr. Rice as to whether a settlement with the vestiges of Lehman Brothers was considered confidential. John Rice and the board, none of which anybody present was on, thought that it was. The Office of Open Records had a different determination as to that. Scathing opinion. So please, if anybody is going to instruct this board on the Sunshine Act and what is confidential and what is not, okay, don't let it be John Rice. Go to an outside consultant. Spend your money wisely, in my opinion. The assertions about ex parte, I really had no idea what Commissioner Farley was referring to with that, but to the extent anybody is operating under the auspices that certain communications can be kept confidential between you and certain constituents, that shouldn't require a lengthy presentation. It should require a presentation if certain people on this board, like, say, the chairwoman, are operating under somehow that ridiculous belief. Yeah, those people need to be talked to quickly and explained that that's not confidential. The document that I was referring to, my first com, set of comments tonight, that correspondence, really two correspondents that were sent to this board by an individual who's put on zoning hearing, Commissioner Barowski apologized to the person who wrote that correspondence multiple times and appeared to express some belief that that should be considered private. There's no privacy when a constituent sends you in your capacity, as Commissioner correspondence, Commissioner Barowski. You served on the school board for four years. How could you possibly think that that was confidential? That Scott Simon sent it to the entire board, every single commissioner, okay? What, how could that be considered confidential? Elected officials, or in Mr. Farley's case, appointed, okay? You thought that it was private? This is now going on, what, your fifth year in elected local politics in Radnor Township, and that was lost on you? You definitely need the training, and other people who might have had that belief system do as well. There are precious few communications under the law that are recognized as confidential, okay? When you, when I send a correspondence to the Board of Commissioners, oftentimes I'll CC the township manager, okay? There's no expectation of confidentiality on my end. The recipient can do what they want with that document. The only times that that might not be the case is if they are a litigant, and even then that's strange, or if it's entirely personnel, in which case it wouldn't be somebody like Scott Simon, who's now on zoning hearing, quasi-judicial. And what exactly in his correspondence did you think was deserving of confidentiality, Commissioner Barowski? When he used the expression, payback's a bitch, you think that's deserving of confidentiality? How about when he talked about his views of lawyers? Okay, this man is serving on a quasi-judicial board. You think that's deserving of confidentiality? Anybody who has business before the zoning hearing board deserves to know that, okay? That doesn't, that's just the antithesis of judicial temperament, okay? Don't you think lawyers who might be advising clients going before zoning hearings should know that? Apparently not. Apparently you thought that that was somehow deserving of confidentiality. And then you apologized repeatedly. There is definitely training that needs to go on for this board, but I dare say, if anybody is operating under the auspices of, well, if a constituent sends me correspondence in my capacity as a commissioner, I should be able to treat that as confidential, that's, there's a real danger to this township. You're not allowed to be...
Mr. Sherry, you have a minute, please. Thank you.
By the way, there's nothing that I'm saying right now that is confidential either, Commissioner Barowski, but I won't be accepting, accepting an apology, you're requesting an apology, okay? This is all public information, okay? Nobody up on this board should be telling constituents that they have the ability to speak with you in a completely confidential manner, especially via emails. That is incentivizing them to act in a way that you're not authorized to provide, that cloak of confidentiality. I only see one lawyer up here, that's Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Clark, when he speaks to a, to a client privately, there's attorney-client confidentiality, that's recognized, okay? But anything else, largely, you're not going to be able to protect in terms of a constituent. So I'm, I was really astonished to see those repeated apologies, to Mr. Simon especially, given the tenor and the language, which you didn't want me to read aloud, Commissioner Barowski, but is up on my Twitter page. You can, you can see that, that language that he used, but any, any belief that somehow you can treat as confidential, written materials that a constituent sends to you in your capacity as a commissioner, that's a, am I suddenly being spoken over? I heard a quip there.
Your time is up, Mr. Sherry. Thank you very much.
I'll wrap it up, yes, thank you very, no, thank you very much, but...
No, thank you.
Please, Ms. Barowski, enlighten yourself in terms of what is and what is not a confidential document, but I dare say, given that this again is your fifth year, that's really information you should already know.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. Your time is up. Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Hi, Baron Gamar South, Wayne. Add a couple of comments to the Sunshine Training, and I've talked to Solicitor about this before too, with the exception of the true quasi-judicial boards like zoning hearing and rental appeals, I think it should be, in addition to the training policy, that none of them go into executive session unless they've cleared it with the Solicitor or someone in his office, because they, even with training, I think they're going to play, they play a little fast with the rules, and we had some issues a couple of years ago with that. So I think as a guideline, that should be the case. I don't think they should be allowed to determine on their own if they can go into that. And secondly, we also have the issue where it doesn't happen as often, but where these, the subcommittees will want to create some kind of working document, and so they'll create a working group, and it's more than just a non-quorum of their members, it includes other members where they're working to create a draft document. And again, I brought this to the Solicitor's attention to make sure that those meetings are public and notified, because I know there's been some differentiation here from commissioners not, not present about whether that's applicable, and again, I've brought that up. So I want to make sure that not only is there training, but there's specific guidelines and or examples of how that would be applied.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Baron.
Anna Marie Hesmond Rosemont again. I do think, I think this is a great idea, because I think there are a lot of people who are less familiar with these things, just starting in their roles, and perhaps there are members of the public who've never learned about this, and having it open to the public is fabulous. When I first saw it, I automatically thought of all the conflict of interest discussions that have been, many of them quite contentious over the last few years about, you know, what constitutes a conflict of interest and what the appropriate behavior is, and I know in my role in a variety of business environments, how we're, you know, conflicts were defined differently in different businesses, and what was expected of us as employees was different in different businesses and stuff like that. So maybe, I mean, I know that it's laid out in the Home Rule Charter, which for many people is near unreadable. So that's, that's local and would have to be a customized training, but to Dan's point, perhaps there is a little more cost-effective way of doing Sunshine and open records training that an independent agency that is not fraught with any relationships or, for better, for worse, maybe that's something we could also avail ourselves of, and if someone has time to investigate some of those and lay out constructive alternatives between now and then, that would be great. You know, I, for one, as someone who's a taxpayer, would like to hear if there are actual legitimate constructive alternatives that people can agree on that are, you know, I think if, if you have an alternative training source, Dan, I'm sure we'd all love to hear it. So thanks.
Hey, Santa Marie. Any other public comment? Okay, then, anything from staff? All right, then I will, can I entertain a motion to adjourn at 10 of 10?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment? Aye, motion passed.